We're ready to go. Okay. So I believe we have Counselor Bernard calling in and...
I'm here, yeah.
And Counselor Duran calling in.
Yeah, I'm here.
Counselor Twill?
Yes, yes, I'm here, yeah.
So I will start off with, we acknowledge, appreciate, the land on which we gather is the traditional onseated territory of the Big Ma First Nation since time immoral, immemorable. So I have called order, and just before I start the meeting, you've all heard the news that our premier, Dennis King, has stepped aside. He's stepping aside not only as his role of premier, I think he's stepping aside as the MLA for the year of District 15, Emma, District 15 Springdale. So Mr. Premier, his wife Jana, and his children, I think we all want to wish him and the family their best in that next stage of their lives. So thank you for your service to the island, and with great cooperation with our premier and his office and ministers, and hopefully that will continue.
Right on, right on.
Any declarations of conflict of interest?
None here.
Okay, none here. We have one item on the agenda, and it's draft 2025-2026 capital budget review, moved by Counselor Ramsey, second by Counselor McLeir. Okay, all in favor? Counselor Duran? Counselor Duran, yea?
In favor, sorry.
Counselor Ramsey?
In favor.
Okay. Counselor Bernard?
Aye, yeah, in favor.
And Counselor Twill?
In favor.
Okay, so we're going to turn it over to Counselor John McLeir, Chair of the Standing Committee for Finance and Administration. Counselor?
Mr. Mayor?
No, Counselor Twill, I know your request, and that has, that will be addressed first. So Counselor McLeir is going to introduce the budget presentation and your items on the first, first of, the first of order.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you.
John, Counselor McLeir?
Thank you, Mayor Brown. Good evening, everyone. Here we go for the draft capital budget. Been, been a lot of work to get here, and have a little bit more, more to do to get, get our capital budget over the line and following in, following in with our operating. So maybe we'll start right into it, and kind of guess go to the bottom line if you will. I'm, I'm going to start at the package, I'm looking at my, my package here, page 15. And if we, if we go to the, just kind of want to take you to the bottom line of all these numbers going from the left to the right of the, of the spreadsheet here. And if everybody's kind of there, I'm assuming you are, we're looking at the same thing. So, so this process started, you know, started weeks ago, and it started out with a capital ask of 25, 26, you can see there, of 113,700,000. And then we're going across, there's partner funding that's in the queue to be, to be allocated for projects that aren't finished yet, of 17, 17 million, 17 million eight. And then the, through the lens of the staff of the various departments, a big part of this is probably public, public works, there was 21,200, kind of reduced, a reduction. That's leaving us going across with a net of 74,600. And then senior management, again, went through the, the projects, the departments, the prioritization, and that got us to 47, 45,700,000 approximately. Our finance committee, our finance committee met yesterday at, at noon, and, and we had a three-hour session or longer, and you can see the, the, the column there, finance committee adjustments or additions, taking us to 14,200,000 for a total of, updated draft of, of, of $60 million. And then just a couple of, a couple of adjustments even since, since our finance meeting at noontime yesterday, it's been confirmed, there's 2 million of, on transit, on the buses that will be able to take off, that would be on line, or page 10 there. The, the staff have confirmed with the appropriate sources that, you know, there was the, the pause on the electrification in electric buses, and that there was clarification to come, could that funding be applied to, to diesel buses, and in fact, it could. So there's 2 million there that, that, that will come off, the, the, the bus number there, which is four, so that's, that's, that's 2 million off our, off our 60. And then further discussion after the finance meeting yesterday, we reached out and we talked with East Link, John Abbott at East Link, depending on where the request goes for the East Link Center, i.e. the, the proposed expansion and the request there. If that request gets, gets passed or whatever by council through this process, he's identified 700,000 that could come off, could come off the request for the, for the East Link Center, as there'd be, be no need to do, do the sorts of things that were identified if, if in fact, the, the project advances. So that remains to be seen, and it's going to be a decision, obviously, of council. So, yeah, the other, and, and the other thing, so that's taken us, you know, you take that 2.7 off our 60 million, and, and, you know, it's, it's been reduced. And another thing, and Lane will be coming in here soon, Lane Pino, our finance manager, the other thing to, to understand, in the, in this net number of taking the 60 and take the 60 million and taking the 2.7 off it, there's around 9 million that finance manager Lane Pino has kind of, I don't say, know if I'll say the word confirmed, Lane, but feels pretty confident that there's about 9 million in, in, in the ask here, that's, that's a carryover from projects from last year. So, so the, you know, so, so the net increase for the capital request this year will be, you know, some, you know, depending on where we end up this evening, and this is going to probably take, probably two meetings, I don't think this will get finalized tonight, so it'll be meeting scheduled for the 25th Tuesday to hopefully maybe finish this. So that's, that's just my open comments, and then we're just basically going to go through, the department heads are here, and we were just kind of going to start from the top, but there was a question, we'll, we'll certainly grant it. Counselor Twill's on the line, Parks and Recreation, we'll start, we'll start there, and...
Yep. Thank you, Counselor McLeir. Counselor McLeir, you know, I think we can do it tonight. Tuesday is, hopefully we'll have a finalized budget that will have a resolution to pass on Tuesday, the 25th. That's, that's the intent tonight, I think we can get through it, we already did through it yesterday. But deputy, do you have a question? Do you just want to rise? And, and I know Counselor, Counselor Bernard also has a question?
Thank you.
It's more so just on the report, I sit on finance, so I know how the meeting went. And we were pretty clear that committee had a recommendation, staff came in with their recommendation, but committee did as well, and I just thought it would be important that the committee recommendation was included in the report, all we have is the administration. And unless I'm reading it wrong, I just thought there should be a staff recommendation to show the committee did their work. Yeah.
Counselor McLeir, do you want to defer that to staff?
Yeah, I, yeah, Deputy Mary Yankoff, I'm, I'm thinking, doesn't, doesn't the, the 14 million that we talked about at committee yesterday not recognize or speak to your point or, no? Am I, maybe I'm not understanding the question or the comment?
I just think that the report should be reflective. I, I totally understand what the documents say, but usually if we're following process correctly, in the report, there's a staff recommendation and a, and a report, and I just didn't see it, and if it's there, then that's great, but I, you know, someone is yelling in my ear saying it's on page four, I didn't see it there, so that's great, because I see the report ended on page three. So that's all. Anywho, my apologies if it's there, but I don't even have a page four on the report. I only have page three for staff, for the, for the committee report, so I don't know where page four is.
All right, I don't, Dan, go ahead, Dan, to, to...
Yeah, so...
No, no, it comes up for her. Yeah, it's automatic.
No, I have that one. But it's the committee report.
No, there's no like.
You're supposed to have something in the committee report.
There we go, yep. Thank you...
No, because it's not in the committee report. That's what I'm saying, it's, there's a special meeting of council with the, with the budget report, but we also have this in our agenda, which is the committee report.
Yeah, so in the actual report, if you scroll, like this is the actual committee report.
Yep, got it.
And if you keep scrolling down on page four of the document, 174, it's...
Doesn't show up in her report? Okay.
Anyways, that's okay, I apologize for slowing down the...
No, 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 that's, that's good. But it is in the report, right, Sue?
As long as it's in the report, I stand corrected, and I...
Now just put your dishes in the dishwasher.
John? Chief Attorney? Okay. Counselor Bernard?
Thank you. Just a quick question. I know at yesterday's meeting, at the end of the day, we, we had a recommendation of 48 million in new expenditures capital, 9 million in carryover from projects that were approved, the funding that was approved last year, for a total of 57 million. I'm just wondering how we got this to 60 million. Where'd the other 3 million come from?
Do you want to defer that, John? Counsel McLeir, good?
The other, the other thing, while I'm on it, the very first line I'm looking at with East Link, yes, John, John Abbott confirmed he took it to 764,000, not 764, so that should be 3 million even.
Counsel, Counsel Bernard, what page is that? Your digital copy?
Uh, it is on page 10.
Okay, thank you.
First line, 3.764, it's actually 3 million even.
Okay. Okay, John? Counsel McLeir?
And I think, I think John did mention 700,000 was coming off, it's actually 764.
Okay, you're, okay, it's, Dan?
Thank you, through, through your worship to Counselor Bernard, there were a couple of errors in the, in the sheet that we looked at yesterday at finance. The first one was on East Link, the assumption was that the ask, that our responsibility would be only 80% of that, that the province would be kicking in 20%, but that was, that was an error on our part, so that was about 700,000. And then similarly on the Bell Alliant Center, Kerry, there was an error in that calculation, and that was an additional almost 5 million. It went from, I think, 1.3 up to 6.3 or so. So those would be...
It did, it did, it did for Bell Alliant, and that came in our meeting yesterday, but East Link, and I think the CIO made it clear that the, the rank part of East Link has always been the city responsibility.
Yeah.
So, and what, what East Link is asking for is 3 million, there's no, you know, there's no partner funding there, but it's not 3.7, or it's, it's 3 million, is what the ask is.
Yes, thank you for clarifying that, and Counselor McLeir did allude to that in his opening remarks where he indicated that John Abbott had indicated there were 700,000 of savings from the 3.7 that's indicated on the sheet that got sent out last night, so that would agree with your 3 million net ask, yeah.
Yeah, 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 just, it's, the only, the only thing is 764, it's, it's, it's not 700 even, 764,000, that, that's to be subtracted.
Counsel, Counsel Bernard and Counsel McLeir, on page 12, under Bell Alliant, it was originally, it was originally 1,300,000, Lane? At the stakeholders' meeting, that, the Director of Finance and Administration I went to, we may declare as stakeholders, as partners, that they would have to finance it themselves, and that we would pay the interest charges, principal charges on that, but this looks like we're assuming the whole thing. Is that right, Lane?
If, if I may, yes, so the, the interest payments were reflected on the, on the sheet yesterday, but in actual fact, the, the debt is ours because it's a controlled corporation, so we consolidate their books with ours, so it, it shows up as a tangible capital asset on our books. The full project is about 10.5 million for both the humidification and the refrigeration, so it, it ends up on our books, whether they set up the, the loan or not, we end up reflecting it on our books, so...
I, I think CAO Sue Fraser is that we will have to have a discussion with Kerry after this meeting, because that was my, not my understanding, nor was the understanding of the president of the university along with her VP. We were looking at them taking on that loan, and I know the capital asset is ours, but I, I didn't think we had to reflect it in our books as, you know, we're paying the full loan with, with the, the university paying 13%, so 87, 37. I don't know if they've agreed to the 13, so we should check this out.
And, and to that point, certainly they, they were very keen to have an off-balance-sheet financing method for them, but their rules, because they're a minority shareholder of only 13%, are different than our responsibilities as, as the controlling corporation, and we have to consolidate those, those records on our books, so it, it does reflect our, our debts and our debt servicing and...
So they don't, the University of Princeton doesn't consolidate these, this tangible asset or tangible cost?
Yeah, no, the, the accounting would be, would be different, they would take a percentage of, of, of the, of the borrowing.
Well, I, I think we, we need to follow up with it, CAO Sue Fraser. John, Counsel McLeir, did you want to start with Parks and Recreation, is that correct?
Yes, your worship will, will do that, and Frank Quinn is... Good, good to go.
What page are we on? 11?
Your worship through to Counselor McLeir, thank you. So the approach that we're going to take this evening is I'll go through the, the capital expenditure list and cover some of the, the higher areas, we have a higher level areas, we have quite a list to go through this evening. And if, if Counselor wants to look at a project specifically, we do have the department managers here, and Frank's by my side here to answer any specific questions. So we will start with Parks and Recreation, under the areas of arenas. Sorry.
Could we ask, are there any counselors that want to look at Parks and Recreation, page 11, digital copy? It goes down to page 12. I know Counsel Twill, you have some questions, but just asking the counselors and the deputy, any questions? You're okay with it? Okay, so Counsel Twill, did you want to bring forward question or questions?
Oh, I just want to thank the Chair of Finance for moving the Parks and Recreation capital projects as the first, first report to council. I'm unable to be there tonight due to an illness, and to be honest with everyone, once that report is over, I'll be ceasing my, my involvement, again, due to my illness. So I want to thank the, the council for giving me that privilege to have the report. We, we do have, we do have a good report to council, the committee's done a lot of work, and with that in mind, as you know, it's still a work in progress, but we believe it's a sound budget, and we're always looking to add. So with that in mind, I'll turn it over to, I think it's, I'm not sure of the format, but we have Frank Quinn, the manager, go through the line items, and then open up the floor for questions. Is that the format?
Counsel Twill, my, I hope you get well, I know you don't sound too well, but Counsel Twill, I think we've just opened it up for all council to ask questions on the different areas, arenas, park development, playgrounds. I think it's, it's back to you, do you want to look at any specific area?
No, no, I, look, whatever's the most, most effective, you know, we, we want to make sure all members of council have a good understanding of what we're proposing, and however you want to deal with this, your worship, you know, we're, we're ready to move forward. So I do want to thank the staff and, and our Parks and Recreation Committee for getting us to this stage, and let's, let's go from there.
Okay. Well, sir, I know you don't have to stay on for the rest of the meeting, so get your rest, and we'll be talking.
Yep.
Frank, do you want to add anything?
No, I don't think so. There was just one project on the list, I'm not sure whether, I'm assuming you're not going through the projects, or are you going through the projects?
I, I think we're just opening it up, so counselors looked over the budget, you know, this is their opportunity to bring up the questions, and we're here with the answers.
There was just one project that I would ask to be reconsidered, and it's the Confederation Landing Project. That project has 75% partnership funding, so there'd be 75% partners, $75,000 worth of partnership funding, and the city's commitment would be 25,000. That involves CADC, Charlton Harbor Authority, DCI, there's a number of groups involved in that. So if we needed to cut a project by that, near that amount, 25,000, we could remove the e-watch cameras and put that project in. I just think it's a really good project, it's working with the CADC and the business community to create a connection from Founder's Hall to Peaks Wharf.
And I, and I would agree with that, your worship.
Okay. So if you go down, can you see the, page 11? So if you go down, can you see the, page 11? Okay. E-watch would be what page, John?
On page 11 also.
Yeah, I see that.
Number 22.
So he's saying...
Okay, I, I just wanted to let everybody know, I know where it's at. Thank you. I just want to know, the question was, did you say remove e-watch camera?
Yep.
If, yeah, if you're looking to make a savings, uh, to offset the 25,000.
And where would that be removed from? That was my question, thank you.
Just remove it.
No, for where is it being installed? Where was it originally to be installed at?
Frank, do you know where the camera?
Uh, right now, we're still identifying the locations. We're working on finishing off this year, uh, and I believe we've got one at Joe Gis Park, we're working on one at Frank, J. Frank McCauley Park, and we're working another one at Central Ball Field. So those are the three, were our three priorities. They have been beneficial and assisting when we have incidents happening in our parks, uh, with, you know, finding the culprits or, you know, dealing with the vandalism whatnot, so we were looking at a couple other problem areas that we would look at, but those parks haven't been identified yet.
So you're not suggesting removing them from the Joe Gis, Frank McCauley?
No, those are, those are underway right now.
Okay, thank you.
So they'll be done, yeah.
Thanks for that clarification.
Question? Uh, Deputy, go ahead.
So, just a, um, couple things. One, I, I would be hesitant to be taking money out of our capital budget and going with less options for e-cameras, given the climate that we're in these days with, you know, the struggles that the parks are having. And, uh, the other thing is, I remember the discussion around this project, that there potentially might be joint funding, um, with the business community and CADC, but there was a lot of, um, information still not, um, available at the time. There was still talk about historically whether or not the Confederation Landing Park could be disrupted, there was all kinds of stuff, and it was very much in the preliminary stages, so I'm wondering how we got from that to now that it's a project that could go ahead.
Do you want to, Frank?
Uh, so we have a preliminary design concept that does meet within the, uh, the look of the park, and they're willing to work with us with regards to not, uh, you know, impacting any of the trees and dealing with all the infrastructures underground. Uh, so it would be across where there already is an existing pathway at the front of the park, and making it that it's more defined, that there'd be more, there'd be overhead, uh, overhead wood partitions, uh, you know, with sort of a, a nicer sort of inviting look that people will want to cross from Founder's Hall over to Peaks Wharf. And, uh, the preliminary design, uh, I can't remember if it was brought to committee or not, but they have been made aware that there is one available.
Frank, is it not part of your package? Is it not part of this package? It is, what page is that? Deputy, it's in your package, I'll just get a question there, go ahead.
I know it's in the package, your worship, but when it wasn't on the list, I didn't pay as much of attention to it. I'm, I'm quite aware that it was in the package. Yeah, yeah, but I'm not, and I, but I, I don't think we should be taking the e-cameras out of the budget. That's my two cents worth. I'm fine with the other project, but not to take the cameras out.
Okay, just add the 25,000.
That's what I was gonna say, your worship, it's $25,000. I mean, we took 2.765 out.
Yeah, just keep going. Good, all right. 25? Okay. Any other concerns? Frank, is that it? Good, okay.
Can I, can I just clarify one thing?
Go right ahead, sir.
Uh, the Victoria Park, um, or not the Victoria Park, I'm sorry, Simmons Artificial Turf Field. So, is, is the ask, we're putting 300 in to, to get it going, is that, is that where we're at?
Just one second. Go ahead there, Counsel McLeir.
Yeah, thank you, Counsel Drong. Um, um, the, the answer to that, and if it's anything different, Frank's here to, to, to clarify. Uh, I understand Counsel Drong, that's to, I guess, get the drawings and the, um, specifications designed, and that, uh, started first, and, uh, depending, um, you know, depending on how that goes and the timeline, uh, if that's something that can be done within, you know, this fiscal year, um, the, uh, you know, the, the, the remaining amount that's designated or suggested in this budget would be determined if, uh, uh, you know, just don't know how, how, uh, how quick the, um, you know, the, uh, the, the, um, design work, you know, will take. I'll let maybe, uh, Frank add that, or...
That, that's fine, John, I, I appreciate that. I just wasn't sure, the numbers, I'm looking across the, the sheet, and I wasn't sure what we're doing, but that, that's great, thank you, that's a great explanation.
Okay, thank you, John, thank you, Counsel McLeir. Okay, good?
Uh, yeah, I got a question.
Go ahead there, Counsel Twill.
Yeah, so, let me get this straight. The Parks and Recreation Committee makes a recommendation for the, uh, full cost of the project for the artificial field turf. And now, we're just submitting three, we're just putting aside, uh, 300,000 for the project, we're not putting in the full scope, uh, of, of what the project would cost. You know, one field as opposed to even two fields. Now, I think, I think really and truly, uh, members of council, we need to move forward on this project. We, we gotta stop delaying. We can do the design work, and we can put in, uh, what we feel is, uh, an estimate for the capital, capital cost to complete the project. The, the sporting groups, and in particular, privateers, and there's representatives there tonight watching this meeting, they've done their due diligence. Uh, they came to the committee, the committee recommended it, so, so, am I to understand? Somebody help me with this. Am I to understand that the Finance Committee overruled the recommendation of Parks and Rec? Is that, is that how this unfolded?
Counsel McLeir?
Thank you, Counsel Twill, for your question clarification. Uh, you know, the answer to that is, uh, you know, you, you, you need a plan, we, uh, you have to go through and do the, uh, get the, um, uh, get the design work done, uh, we, there needs to be certainty, you know, around what the project's gonna cost, and, uh, the only way you get at that is, uh, having, having design, design work done and specifications done, and, um, and, you know, see how that goes. If that ends up getting, you know, um, getting facilitated and back in Parks and Rec's hands, and, uh, you know, it, it, you know, it's all good and it happens within this fiscal year, um, there's the opportunity to, uh, to still, uh, advance the project if, uh, if, if, if that design work comes in and it, uh, it looks like it's fitting within what's, what we're projecting, uh, I guess, you know, the cost to be. So, and, and if that's the case, um, there can be, um, there, there can be perhaps, you know, a special meeting call of council on this to, uh, to, uh, you know, allocate funds, uh, you know, remaining funds if that's, uh, if that's how it goes. So, it's, it's just basically a timeline to, to, um, you know, to, uh, start the project and, and see how, you know, see how that goes, so, it's, it's really a timing thing, and I don't know, Frank, do, anything different, or...
And I, I could probably help there too, your worship.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I think, I, I, and I think, again, they, uh, it's agreeable the project goes ahead, so just, just so Mitchell knows, it's agreed the project goes ahead. Our understanding is that by the time the, the drawings and design is done for that, that turf field to be put in there, um, it's, it's looking like it'll be, uh, midsummer to, to early fall. Uh, so my understanding is if it comes back in, in, in midsummer and early fall, there's still time to, to do it, um, the project will go ahead, you'll, you'll call council together, uh, to, uh, to, uh, add extra money to the capital budget to make sure the project gets finished. So it's really just one of those things where, can it, can it get done in this fiscal year? So right off the bat, they want to go out and get the design done, and apparently that takes a while to get the, the, the design done. So, the 3.4, or, the 3.4, the 3.1 has been left outside the capital rate now, um, and if the design comes in in time, then, then council will, will reconvene to add the extra $3 million to get the field built.
Counsel Twill, just give, Counsel Matar, do you want to ask?
I do, yeah, so, if we're looking at spending the 300,000 to do the design work, which will likely, um, not be completed by the end of the season, like the, the...
Frank, is, is, could it be done by the end of, like, when do you, if you have the money, what do you think, Frank?
Uh, once I get the 300,000 awarded, I'll be going out and getting in engineering services to work on the design drawings, uh, get a good asked, Class C estimate, and then also, uh, we'll have them working on the tender document while I'm bringing to the public to get their public input on the design and whatnot. So, you know, I, the tender documents could be ready to be posted in July, and that's what I'd look at. We'd have a good idea of Class C estimates, come back to council and get their support and get it posted, and then potentially start construction in, uh, early August.
Early August of 2025?
Cool, if we get the funding.
And that's what we thought.
If that's, if that's the case, then, well, why are we, why are we not committing the 3.4 million dollars to the budget, as opposed to coming back and asking for a special warrant to do that? It seems there's a little bit more at play here, let, let's just earmark 300 and come back at a different point and ask for more. It seems just silly to me, like, why don't we just add that now? I just heard right from Counsel Bernard, we are committed to doing this project by the Department of Finance, so let's put the money forward. I, I, I said, we'd just be shuffleboarding here, I don't understand that.
Well, we're, we're gonna be going to a resolution or, uh, discussion on East Link. They want the funding from, from this city, from City Hall, to go out and do the engineering and the design for the renovations, but they're not going to tender until they do that. So, it's the, the same principle, so there's no, there's no playing around here.
The time comes then, too.
Yeah, good. Uh, Counsel, just, just...
I, I agree with Counsel Matar. We're either in, or we're not in, and if we're in, and it could be by August, and it's a commitment that we're making, then the money should be approved. I'm not interested in putting $300,000 on a plan, and then something else come up next year, and then it becomes less of a priority. We're either making this a priority as a city and we're gonna commit to the money, or we don't.
Okay, so, do you want to put the 3.4 million in?
Yes.
If that's what we're saying, then I think that is what we have to...
So it's moved by Counsel McCabe, sacked by Counsel Twill, to put the 3.4 in?
That's exactly.
Good? Like, I'm, we're not gonna take votes in this. Are you all right with that? Good? Counsel Matar? Counsel Beck? Yeah, but just, but we're, again, we're gonna have to take something from somewhere else. Yeah. Yep. Counsel Twill?
Yes, it's favor.
Okay.
I don't, I don't think, your worship, uh, can I speak there?
Go ahead.
I don't think it really takes anything, I don't think you have to take anything, anything else, because we, we did agree that the project was to go ahead, everybody agrees, uh, doing it. I think the thought process was from, from, uh, senior men and, and electors was, if the money's not gonna get spent this year, if it looks like it's not gonna get spent, then why make it part of the capital budget? But if it is able to get constructed, then, then move ahead and do it, go back, council asks for money. If, if Frank is confident that he can do it, get it started in August, then, yeah, put the money in, but I don't think you have to take anything else, we just took 2.7 out.
Yep. Counsel McLeir?
I think we're prob, we're probably at our cap now to add more stuff, but I think there was still room, I think when we talked about that, there was still room.
Yep. Counsel McLeir, good?
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with it, I mean, if that's, if that's the wish, the, uh, the wish of the majority of council, uh, yeah, fine, I mean, there's, uh, I think council, uh, is committed to, to the project, at least for those that spoke already, um, but just, but just on that, when, um, the, you know, the call for the design and getting the design work, that process is not gonna confirm, that's right now, because it's gotta go to tender, that's not gonna confirm, that's not gonna confirm the final price, the project.
Correct, until the Class C estimate will have a good idea, and then we'll go out to tender, and that's when you have actually your Class A estimate, because you actually have the exact price.
Yeah, could be more, could be less. Counsel McKellen, good? Counsel Drong?
Uh, yeah, this is just for one.
Yep. Well, that's it.
Okay.
Okay. Counsel McCabe, good. Counsel Bernard, good, okay. That's it?
Yep.
Counsel Matar, another point there? Go ahead.
So, thanks for Counselor, um, bringing the comment, uh, Drong. So we did talk in the, in, in our committee meeting, I think, to the manager, who were going to see if you could figure out what the estimate was for two fields. Uh, I, I did speak up in that meeting thinking that, why would we do this just partially, um, and not all as one project? So I'm thinking we should be adding in, um, somewhere in the $2 million range into the 26, 27 as an estimate over there. Can we do that at this point in time or not, to identify?
26, 27?
I know we're not approving that for there, but I know...
Yeah, we're just doing 25, 26, so...
I know, but I'm just thinking, well, it should have a, well, then it should be 5 million something over then a five-year period, or a two-year period.
Frank?
Counsel, uh, Matarx, so, uh, we'll have a better idea once we get this one field built, that what the cost of a second field will be, so, and right now, we'd just be guessing if we were putting it in, and we're also going to see how this field is received by the public and how it's used and whatnot, so, that will sort of dictate whether there is a need for another field.
Um, can I jump in?
Go ahead.
Uh, thank you, thank you, Mayor Brown. Um, well, I can tell you that the, the, that the need is overwhelmingly strong support for the city to have, uh, not one, but two. We'll start with one, but, well, when we do the, uh, call for designs, uh, you know, we'll even get more, uh, more information, concrete information. That was, uh, I believe that was the decision of the committee back when we met, uh, oh, a number of weeks ago, um, and the, uh, privateers, uh, showed up in, uh, the privateers community, uh, showed up in, in strong force. Uh, a couple of things I want to bring to, uh, council's attention. Privateers also, uh, sponsors and hosts, uh, flag, flag football. Flag football has now become an Olympic sport, which is fantastic. Flag football is interrelated to tackle, and a lot of the players that have a good experience with flag, a lot of them get into the tackle, and it's grown in leaps and bounds here in the capital city. So, from that perspective, flag football, you know, and we gotta have the pro, proper field dimensions, make no mistake about it. It's an Olympic, it's now become an Olympic sport, and I think that's tremendous. That's a great shot in the air for amateur football. But I'm not just talking football, because at one of our recent meetings at Parks and Rec, we, we said, we're gonna build, uh, even one field, two fields, 10 fields. Fields are truly to be multipurpose fields, to be all-eclosive, so that all sports can have an opportunity to, to be able to utilize this much-needed venue or venues. So that's what we have to keep in mind. We gotta keep in mind is that we're the capital city. We're the capital city, we need to lead by example. We've done some great things. Simmons Arena is a case in point. There's the rave reviews that we've received on that facility just continues on a daily basis. That's not overstating, that's not exaggerating, those are the hard call facts. And the information I have from all demographics, we want these facilities built in our neighborhoods and our communities.
Okay.
Where, where, and Simmons, it's ideal location.
Yep.
It's an ideal location, uh, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I know, Counsel Twill, I just, it's, it's 5:45, we're still on one item. Anyways, can you just wrap it up there already?
Okay, no, look, I can't tell you how important this is. Like I said, we've got brought it there tonight.
Yeah.
Paul Trillin and, and Mitch Peach and a few other guys, and the, I want members of council to know, the work that they put into this has just been, it's been unprecedented, and it, hats off, and they had my foot.
Yeah, and hats off to you too, because you've been pushing it too. Counsel Beck?
Yeah, um, so, I, I attended that Finance meeting yesterday, for at least part of it, and, uh, when we were there, uh, the figure of 45 to 50 million dollars was being bandied about as a target for capital spending. spending. I get my report there last night, and it's bumped up to 60 million. Come here today, reduction of 2 million from buses, 765,000 from East Link, and we're one item into our eight-page document, and we're already back up to 60 million dollars. What's our target?
Well, again, that's what we asked yesterday, and if you looked at your document in the first part.
I did look at the document.
Okay. So, can I just explain it, please?
Sure.
So, these are up-to-date actuals for this year's expenditure.
Yeah.
Okay? If you look at our financial audited statements of March 30th, March 31st, 2024, last year's, of the 65 million, no, plus that we budgeted, we spent 51 million. Are we going to spend all our money for '24, '25? Probably not. So, yes, we do overbudget, but I think these are some of the first issues that we have to deal with. So, we have to make some cuts as we go through. That's what you have to keep in mind.
Okay. So, right now, what we're doing is we're, we don't really have a target right now. We're just going to continue to add on and then eventually have to cut to get to a particular number that we can all agree upon.
Similar to what we did yesterday, finance committee.
Okay.
So, anything that we're adding right here, right now, may or may not end up on the final capital budget.
We will see.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Councillor McCabe?
Really hard because every department has their priorities, and it'd be nice if it was really prioritized, so we really understood what were our biggest priorities coming in, so that it made it easier. Again, what's our final, kind of our budget, but what does each department require as far as, I know they have their one, two, threes, but it's kind of all over the place. It would be really great if here's our 10 capital projects that we really think we need to focus on.
And if you look at your sheet there, where it says in the first column, Frank or Lane, they're the ratings from the managers? So, if you look in the first column, those are the ratings from the managers, and then where's the ratings for the senior management?
Yeah, they took it out.
Now, if you go to your first column, A, A is your rank. Yeah.
Is there any way that that could be taken out of department? That's great that that's Parks and Rec's priority, but as a full city, if we have 50,000, 50 million dollars to spend, here's what the ranking is regardless of what department? Is there any way that that can happen with our directors coming into council?
Councillor MacLeir?
Your worship.
Can I just add something?
Yeah, yeah. Councillor McCabe, you just, yeah, to that, I guess, as Mayor Brown's indicated, we've got the ranking system that's in front of us. Again, this is a process, as we've, anyway, have come to learn, is can always be refined and can always be perfected, that what we have in front of us tonight is, you know, is a ranking system and a criteria that we have to work through, and we'll just have to do our best to get through it. Thank you.
Councillor Beck? And then councillor.
Yeah, well, it just seems to me, I mean, we started with the overall ask was 107,000, and that would be on all wishes and all wants. Then we had to go back. That number was not feasible, so they had to go back to the department heads, work through the departments, trim, 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 get it down to a manageable number. It just seems we're going back, potentially back into that first column all over again, only to go back into getting into a number that we're going to work with, when we've already taken it, the original Christmas wish list, if you will, and we were asked to go back and revise that Christmas wish list into a reasonable number. Now, it just seems to me that we're going back into unreasonable territory, only to have to go back into a reasonable territory. So, it seems to me we're kind of going back and forth.
But councillor Beck, I've sat through six budgets when I was in council. This is the process we went through. Last year, we went through this process. You participated in it.
It was, yeah, and I found it particularly difficult.
Yeah, four years, in the first term, 2018 to 2022, same thing. This is under the MGA, the Municipal Government Act, this is supposed, this is an open, transparent, accountable presentation. Back when I was in council, we closed the doors and we went at it. Now, it has to be very professional. We have to weigh the pros and cons and what we want to go with and what we don't want to go with, and we have to keep that within a manageable capital budget that we will all accept or all agree to. So, again, you know, last year, we were told every time we borrow a million dollars, we have to set aside 100,000. I can tell you by looking through the statements, our statements for this year, we're budgeting to put over 14, close to 15 million dollars to debt service, debt that we're incurring or have incurred. That's up 5 million over the '22, '23 budget. So, are we in fiscally a good position? Yes, we are, but in terms of trying to keep within 60,000 or 60 million or 65, this is the process we go through. So, we will have to come to some parts where we'll have to say, maybe we don't need 2 million. Maybe that can be a million. But that's the discussion we'll have. Deputy?
Yeah, thanks. And just as somebody who sits on finance, you know, we heard from all of the managers from the departments, then the senior leadership team took another look at it, and they provided the finance committee with their percentages and recommendations, and then the finance committee then put in their recommendations, and that's why we're here tonight now for council to kind of give the final, you know, look at what, you know, what the priorities are. So, other than that, just circling back really quickly to the multi-purpose turf field, although, thank you so much councillor Twill for the work you've done on this file, and I think that's great that we brought up the, you know, the multiple emails we've been receiving and the work from the football community, but I just wanted to make it clear that I'm in absolute support of the multi-purpose turf field, but by no means is this a football field. This is multi-purpose, and football and amongst other sports will be using this facility. So, thanks. Bye.
Okay. Councillor MacLeir, do you want to go? Oh, councillor Bernard?
That's the problem.
Thank you.
Okay, councillor Bernard?
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Maybe I can clear some of this up because there's some misconceptions there, and I could see where it's come from. So, for example, when councillor Beck talks about 60 million, we're supposed to keep it at 45. I want to clarify, when we were looking at capital budget, we were asking for that figure. It was 50 million, between 50, 55, like to keep it around 50 million. Okay? So, when senior management went through and had their recommendations, they had it at 45,739,000. But don't forget, there's $9 million of money that was already approved, of projects that were already approved, that are carrying over. So, your 60 million that council's looking at is actually 48 million plus the carryover. The ticket's to 57. We're at 60 now, including the turf field. So, we've taken, so our new ask, the financing money we're at, we're at 51 million, and your 9 million carryover takes you to 60 million. And that's why I said there was room there for the turf field, but now that that's there, anything more we add, we have to cut somewhere. Unless council wants to take it to the max of 55. We're trying to keep it around the 50, between 50, 55, but that 50 was the number. So, 50 plus nine, I'm sorry, your 9 million carryover comes off to 60, then that's where we are in new dollars.
Okay. Okay.
So, right now, everything that's in this capital budget right now, everything that's in it is a do. If you want to add more to something else, then we have to take something else, starting now. So, just to make that clear, because I'm not sure, from when I was here, that was very clear.
Okay. Mr. Pino?
Your worship, through to councillor MacLeir and council. So, just to back up and to clarify what we're looking at here in terms of this spreadsheet, which kind of outlines the process that we did, and to just to kind of isolate, to get to the numbers that we're dealing with today. So, the first three columns there, where we see the department project title, status, the department submissions, so on the far left-hand corner, we did ask all of the departmental managers and leaderships to rank their projects, whether it was from 1 to 10, 1 to 20, 1 to 50. So, that was all identified and identified in this report. We also directed the departments to circulate that with their respective committees, again, with the prioritized list, so that they were aware that that's what was being brought forward. So, the first three columns speak to that in terms of the first column there of 113.7 million, and that's revised, please note, from last night to account for the Bella Lion and East Link adjustments. The partner funding as well came from the department. The next two columns there, the senior administration adjustments, so we asked the directors, the chiefs, the senior members of the administration to review the projects from a timeline standpoint in terms of feasibility to get done within the next fiscal year and so on. And then, so yesterday, through our deliberations through the finance committee, at that point when we went into that meeting, we were at 45.7 million, which you see at the top of the column there saying senior administration recommended. And then the finance committee adjustments, based on discussions yesterday, were the 14 million to bring us up to the 60 where we are today. So, so from, I guess, from a where do we go from here standpoint, we did get to the point where in the current version column, that's the level of support or recommendations that we're dealing with, and then obviously, we're here to work through with council to head or take away from that list.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Do you, councillor MacLeir, do you know the point? Go ahead.
Anyway, I'll be quick on this, but just on turf fields, I just kind of want to share. I wanted to, I reached out, I wanted to understand, they have turf fields in Cornwall. So, I reached out and I talked to their equivalent, Frank Quinn, it's Kim Muirner, and, you know, as probably many of us understand, I mean, they've got a pretty good facility out there. They've got a couple of fields, one with uprights and others more of a soccer field, no uprights, but they've got, you know, parking and infrastructure, clubhouse. But anyway, I was just curious to understand the utilization, and Kim went through last year's utilization of the field, and just, and again, this was just for kind of information purposes, and, you know, in Charlestown, you know, we need one or two fields, you know, I can't speak to, you know, that exactly, but anyway, what Kim shared with me with Cornwall's, on Saturday and Sunday of last year, from September to December, on Saturdays from September to December, there were two Saturdays where the field was utilized, I don't know if that was football or whatever it was, but, and then on Sunday, on Sunday from September to December last year, it was empty all day, and Monday, it was whatever, basically empty, I guess. The heavy utilization is Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday for the various user groups, and then I guess the weekends can be, you know, can be kind of spotty. So, it, I guess I just kind of shared that with you. I, you know, had no idea, I just would have maybe assumed, perhaps it was maxed out, but anyway, that's just for information purposes.
Thanks for that information. Okay. Lee? Mr. Pino or Dan, or do we want to start at East Link? Top?
Top.
Parks and Rec, we did it. We're moving on. Okay? East Link?
Mr. Mayor? Hello? Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
So, the money is put in for the capital project for the full cost?
Yes, sir. Now, we're going to have to find somewhere to take it from somewhere else. Are you going to stay online or are you not well enough?
No, not well enough, but I do want to, I do want to inform all members of city council. Last night, I received a phone call from a member of council in Cornwall. They had a meeting, the mayor and the council are fully supportive of one to two field turf from the city of Charlestown. I'm going to be getting a letter, and I will be sending that letter out to all members of council.
Okay.
That's from the town of Cornwall. And secondly, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. We're listening.
Okay. There's another letter support coming in from Holland College president Sandy McDonald.
Okay. So, you're sending out some letters? You're getting news to that, sending out letters?
No, I'm not sending that. No, 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 Mr. Mayor. It's all part of the campaign.
So, can we start with East Link? Councillor MacLeir?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr.
Okay, thank you, and get your rest, sir. Okay. Ready to go?
Good night.
Okay. John, you ready?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Brown. Yeah, so the East Link Center number you have in front of you there, I spoke to this earlier, the top line there is 3,764,000. And we went back and talked with John after a finance, John Abbott, after a finance committee meeting yesterday to see if there's any, you know, any adjustments or differences he wanted to consider with the, you know, with his ask. So, not knowing where the ask is for the plan design and the next step that's involved with this project, if it's considered, as you know, council approved earlier a $25,000 allocation for them to go out to get detailed data as to what it would cost to get detailed plan design for this expansion if it was to take place, and that happened. And the result of that process, they come back, I think there was, I believe there was three or four, three or four replies come back on that, you know, on that tender, and what it comes down to is if this expansion is to be considered, to continued on, it's going to cost 2.6, 2,625,000 to get a detailed plan, architect, plan, design work done to put John and his group in a position to see what the partner funding would look like for this sort of project. So, it's, you know, it's a substantial ask, it's a big ask, it's a decision that council, you know, has to, I guess, decide, you know, in terms of the, in terms of the multi-use entertainment center. As you know, John and his group were in, did a presentation, George Matthews was part of that presentation, and in kind of a nutshell, it, I think it was, you know, kind of presented, which to me, it made sense. What are your options? One is to do nothing. The next thing is, I guess, you know, you do a brand, you do a brand-new facility, you know, from square one, I have no idea what that would cost, but, you know, there's figures that are thrown around, 180, couple hundred million, I have no idea, but that's going to ground zero, or the other option, which is kind of a consideration here for the next step, is, you know, is the renovation, expansion. And that's what this is, that's what this is about. You know, it's a big ask, but from what I understand from talking to people that, you know, that are in this space, you know, it's a lot of money, but if you have a good detailed plan and specs done, it puts you in a good position to reach out to your funding partners to see, you know, if they're interested in participating on this, you know, on this possible expansion.
Okay. So, is it 3.7? So is it, is it 3.7, 3,764, or is it 3 million?
Well, I guess at the end of the day, it's, it's 3 million, of which the biggest part of that is, you know, is the ask here for the plan design, 265, the other is, the other is some minimum. And the reason for the, the reason for the, for their change, for their change in reduction, 700,000, you save the Eastlink, you know, what, where did that come from? Well, there, the thinking is, and I guess you can probably guess this, is that, that if the, if the, if this ask is approved to continue on to the next phase of this possible expansion, that, that, that if it is approved and this thing advances, there'd be no need to spend the 700,000 that represents the various things that they, that they were proposed to do. And I guess if, if this doesn't advance or continue to live as a, as a project, that, that then I guess if it was back here this time next year, they'd be looking for that 700,000 or maybe more to do, to do the sorts of things. So I guess basically, this is kind of, you know, a decision time, you know, for this? And is it something that, so anyway, I'll maybe leave it there and see if there's good feedback.
Presentation, sir. So it's lane, it's down to, instead of 3,764, it's 3 million, correct? Or Dan?
Three, yes, Your Worship, 3,65,000.
65, okay, so just make that, can we make that change?
No, it's, it's 3 million even.
3 million?
It's not 3, I don't know where the 65,000 is.
Okay.
But I spoke with Mr. Abbott and I were on the same flight, and he tells me it's 3 million even, and they get what they need done. That's, that's the ask and what they need done in the rink right now.
Okay. Council Ramsey, Council Matard.
Thank you for that. So we already approved 25,000 for an RFP, am I correct with that part? And now they're looking for another, let's say, $3 million for another report? Is that where that's coming?
No.
Council Mc...
Could somebody explain that to me?
Council McLeary, you answered, or you want Council?
Is that where the 3 million, what's the, what's the ask for the 3 million? Where's that going?
Okay.
Basically, the spirit of it, Council Ramsey, is the, you know, off the 3 million, there's 2,625,000 is for, is for detailed architect plans to get drawings done, to be able to put, put John and his team and the Eastlink team in a position to go look for partner, partner funding in, in the project if it was to advance. So, and then the difference, there's 400,000 there approximately, that would be spent on, spent on some miscellaneous items.
Backup generator, other things, yeah.
Well, I can tell you exactly, just one second here.
That's okay, I just wondered if, so we're spending, we're looking... Going to spend 2.5 million for another evaluation?
No, it's not another study.
It's not?
It's engineering, design?
No. Can I speak, Your Worship?
Just engineering, design, and plans for the renovation.
Can I speak on it, Your Worship?
Just one second, I just have Council Matard here.
Okay, no problem, no problem.
Go ahead, Council.
I just can't see.
Thank you. So on the, on the design of the 2.7 million dollars, am I missing something in what we paid for the 25,000 dollar RFP to, did we get a cost estimate for what this may look like? Has that been provided, Councilor McLeary?
No. Go ahead, no, no, the Council Matard, the, I think Council Ramsey may be same, similar question, the 25,000 was to, was to, was to go up to the various groups to see what their, what their cost estimates would be to give detailed plan design for this, for this expansion.
So it was only for that, okay. So we had, we have a number of vendors that have probably applied, and they estimated it would cost them 2.7 million dollars to do these designs. I'm hearing that if we need to spend the 2.7 million in order to get potentially partner funding, but we have no idea how much a potential renovation will cost at the Eastlink Center. It could be 25 million, 50 million, 100 million, right? We have no, we have no idea what that's going to cost?
That's not correct.
That, yes, Council Matard, that's correct, the, and if you can remember back, I know it's been, I know it's been a while, when John, when John and his group were in, George Matthews, I think I'm pretty close in saying, if this process, they're, they're hoping or expecting, it can be in this 45 to...
I just want to interrupt, I just want to know, do we have a cost estimate, yes or no, on the potential for the reconstruction of this arena? It's, yes or no?
So the design and the engineering?
No, we don't, no, no.
John, if I can just, the design and engineering, when you go out, when you go out to tendering, that's when we'll find him the price. That's, that's, we need that design and engineering plans in order to go to...
That's fine, I'm getting to my point. Okay, so you're asking council to approve 2.7 million dollars to get that work done with an unknown capital cost of what that might be. So if it's 80 million, are we risking 2.7 million to then face an 80 million dollar expansion that we may or may not approve?
Yeah.
Is that what I'm, is that what I'm hearing here today? So why are we back?
No, You Worship, let me speak.
No, 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 just, just one second.
I don't know who's running this.
No, no, just answer, finish your question.
Well, that's my question, but every time I ask a question, we have, we have Councilor Bernard who has an answer to everything that...
Yeah, yeah, he's not supposed to, just finish off your...
Who's answering these questions?
Council McLeary.
Okay.
That's who you're addressing the question.
I'd like to just finish and ask the questions, and then somebody, I'm directing to the financier. Is my assumption correct that we're paying 2.7 million dollars to get these, these design documents done and everything else to determine the cost associated with the expansion that they're looking for? And right at this moment in time, we have no idea how much that may cost in the future, whether it's 50, 70, 80 million dollars?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. So we're, we're going to, we're going to decide here tonight if we're going to commit to spending 2.7 million dollars to find out how much this is going to cost us in the future?
Correct. So let's go back to what Council McLeary said.
A lot of money.
He had three options. Renovate, build a new one, or do nothing. So pick one of those three.
Well, I'm not, I'm not saying I don't support...
But I'm just saying, those are the three options.
How is it that we have to pay 2.7 million to get that, only to find out? I thought we were paying 25,000 dollars to go out and get an RFP done to find out how much it was going to cost to do these renovations?
The RFP that went out was to find out who could do the work. That's what it, this engineering for...
Okay, well, let's go to another RFP.
Can I just finish?
Yep, sorry.
So to engineer, to engineer, design and engineer, the renovations that we're looking at, it's not just any firm that can do that, there are engineering firms that have specialized it. They had to look at the totality of the project, they had to sit down with the, with the management at, at the Eastlink Multi-Use Sports Entertainment Center and ask them, what's your conceptual design? So based in that conceptual design, they said, here's what it's going to cost just to blow out the walls at the top of your, of your arena. This is, this is going to be the cost to bring the atrium in the center block and have an escalator, for example, up the middle. That's what they said. That's, that's, that's the cost.
Well, I'm, I'm a bit concerned that we're committing 2.7 million dollars to an unknown decision. Decision at the end of the day, yeah.
Council McLeary.
Council Matard, I share your concern, I'm with you. And I mean, our finance, our CFO, Dan, Dan Jenkins, has, I know, in discussions with him, anyway, he's going to, going to speak to, there was, there was a report done, and this is going to be, again, old data, but it somewhat speaks to the question of, these are, these are all numbers. And Dan, there was a report done by Coles Associates, and I'll let you speak to it.
Sure. Thank you, counselor, through the chair, to Council Matard. So in 2024, Eastlink Management, CCMI, hired Coles Associates to take, there's been a lot of water under the bridge on this concept. So there was a 2004 concept, which is essentially what's being proposed at this time. They took that exact concept and normalized it or updated the, the cost figures for 2024 numbers. The total cost forecast in, in April of 2024 was 38 million. And I think one of the intentions or one of the objectives behind the 25,000 dollar request for the RFP design was that we would get some additional feedback from those architects and engineers as to the reasonableness of that estimate. I'm not privy to the exact estimate that, that CCMI did receive back, but I understand it was somewhere between 40 and 60 million. So it is a significant project. It, you know, I think we, we, I have, it's a good project, but I think it's a project that if we're to move forward with, we, we need funding partners. And while it would be a jumpstart to have ready-made plans to go, I think it is risky to, to invest 2.6 million dollars on a project that hasn't received council approval yet. And there's quite a deliberation that, that should take place. We have received a couple of previous reports that I don't know if current counselors have been privy to, through Sierra Planning and Management, which looks specifically at, at this proposal, within the context of a, the multi-sports and entertainment center that was originally in the Eastern Gateway Plan. So, you know, I think there is a fulsome discussion that should take place at council in terms of where this fits in the priorities of, of the city's capital expenditure plan. But, yeah, so I just wanted to clarify that there were some cost estimates that we've seen.
Council McLeary, I just want to get Deputy Mayor first, and then Council McCabe.
Thank you, Your Worship. So over the years, I've been a little bit involved in some of the long-term planning around, you know, a new and improved facility versus our current Eastlink Center. And, you know, we're, we're 80% responsible for the Eastlink Center. And as one of the, one of the reports had said, you know, the cost of doing nothing is non-nothing. So we do have to make a plan, and we have aging infrastructure that needs to be improved. And the, the cost of doing aging infrastructure far under, underspends a brand-new facility. So I think that's what Eastlink is, is asking us to work with them, you know, as we go through this. And yes, it's going to cost money to work through it, but if we went ahead with a new facility at the Eastern Gateway area, we're still going to have these types of cost estimates that we're going to have to pay for to get the price of what we're actually doing. So for that reason, I do support Eastlink in their, in their journey on how we can get a new and improved piece of infrastructure that's well-needed for the, for the, for the city, so.
Council McCabe.
Yeah, and when, in watching finance yesterday, and I might have missed this because there's already been a lot of discussion, but we had talked about trying to reach out to see if there was going to be some partner, some sharing with the province, as they are 20% owner of the, you know, of the center. Were we able to get an answer to that question, if they're going to cost share some of that?
Yes, we, through the chair, Council McCabe, we did get clarification that it would be 100% city expense. Just one further point, I am a little concerned, we just got this request from CCMI a week, two weeks ago, so we didn't really have much of a chance to do any kind of due diligence in terms of bringing a report forward to, to finance or, or otherwise. I am a little concerned that where this project hasn't been approved, our tangible capital asset policy stipulates that, that work of this nature on a project that hasn't received approval may not be capitalized, that it would be an operating expense. So just a little heads up on that, that that may be, may be a little problematic. And that's in section 4.3.5 of our tangible capital asset policy.
Council Beck, and then Council Matard, and Council Bernard.
I think Council Bernard had something, no?
Please go, just, let's keep it rolling.
Okay. Anyway, I, I think we've, personally, I think going back to the three options, do nothing, renovate, or build new. Build new is not an option. Doing nothing is just going to continue to cost us in the long run, short term and long term. So I support going ahead with, I think this is the most plausible venture to go down, or the most plausible or the most reasonable path to follow, even though it's a significant amount of money. So I would, I would suggest that we keep it in and that we work towards trying to come up with a plan. It is part of doing business, kind of what the deputy said, and so I support keeping it in there.
Council Matard and Council Bernard.
Thank you, Dan, for clarifying that for me. I think that certainly addresses all my questions. So again, I wasn't aware that, that RFP report did somewhat bring back an additional update to what the study did in 2024. So it's good to see that this may somewhat commit us to between a 40 and a 60 million dollar project. I agree with you, we're probably entering into some territory that I think we need to take a step back and have a look at from a procurement perspective, because again, we have no, there's no guarantee that after this study of this 2.7, that this council or the next council, if whatever that is, is going to approve a 40, 60 million dollar expenditure for that asset. And I'm not saying, you know, to me, it's not do nothing, build or renovate, it's the process that I'm trying to follow here. So to me, I feel like I'm committing 2.7 million dollars, and we're then now pushing ourselves into a hole that we have to keep going down because we've expended that money. It's, it's committing us, a basic, I feel it's committing us, because I don't know how, at one point, we said, ah, this is not really going to work for us, we'll just, we spent 2.7 million dollars and walked away from a project. That's pretty risky, as far as I'm concerned. We're not talking 50,000 dollar documents, 100,000, we see that all the time in parks where they're getting document, rendering documents done. You may be able to walk away from some of those, but this would be a tough one.
It's, this is a 30 million dollar facility.
I get it, but it's also 3 million dollar. I'm not saying no, I'm not saying no, I'm just saying that we need to step back and have a look at it.
Council Bernard?
Thank you, Worship. And sorry, Council Matard, you felt I was cutting you off. I was just trying to save the last 15 to 20 minutes of time by letting you know that as part of that tender document we gave Eastlink Center, it was to come back with an estimated cost, which was between 46 and 60 million. So that's why I was trying to cut in, because I was hearing that there was no cost, there was no, there was no estimate, the other was. So I was just trying to save the last 15 to 20 minutes. My opinion, with the tender that we gave, the 25,000, to go out was to find out the approximate cost and the cost to do the design and engineering drawings. If you don't have the design and engineering drawings, then you can't go looking for partner funding, because it's like walking in saying, we'd like to, we'd like to renovate, but we don't have any drawings, but we do be a partner. So you have to get this done to be able to go to the next stage. The facility is, I believe now, is 32 or 33 years old. At some point, we're going to have to do something with it. So I'm on side to getting the design done, because, you know, if we don't move on it next year, the year after, once you have the plans done and the, and the design, it's, it's ready to go. So if some funding comes down the pipe, this plan will always be ready to go to be able to do the renovations. To me, if we don't do that, then it just continues to deteriorate, and it's costing us, you know, it'll end up costing us more and more money. So I look forward, I, we've all had an idea what the plans look like that they'd like to do in the renovation, and I think that, that looks pretty good. Now it's just getting design and the engineering drawings so they can move ahead and, and start getting partner funding.
Okay.
So that's the only reason, I'm sorry if I felt I was jumping in too much, but I apologize for that.
I think you're pretty passionate about this, this issue. So Council Bernard, because I can't see you, just text Tracy and when you want to talk, that way we can, okay. So, Council Dron, you're out there in, out there in communications land, any, any opinion, any input?
No, it's good discussion, I'm fine with everything, that's great, thank you.
I quickly have to find out, okay, where are we going with it? Again, it's just a straw vote, deputy, yea, nay? Stay the course? Council Matard, yea, nay? Council McCabe, yea, nay? And Council Dron, yea, nay?
Stay the course, yeah, yea.
Council Bernard? Okay.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, so we can move on. It's at 3 million, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, let's go to the next item. Boys, oh, boys, we're we're moving along. Maybe we should we should go for recess. No, better not. I'm looking at Counsel McCabe, no recess. Environment and sustainability and transit, and we have Anna Keenan here. It is, well, I think I'm looking just at page 10. Okay, Anna, do you want to just Counsel McLeir or sorry, Mr. Pino, Mr. Pino, let's let Mr. Pino go first. He's he's the numbers man, him and Dan.
Thank you, your worship. So I'm just going to go through the the section here briefly and then obviously Anna's available to answer any specifics with with respect to the project. So so environment sustainability, so that's broken up into two areas you see there. First, environment sustainability and then transit. So under the environment sustainability, you'll see there, there's a number of projects that were supported to move forward, including tree replacement, replacing trees from Fiona, active transportation infrastructure for cycling network installation, a bike share program, which is self-explanatory, downtown tree pits and planters for one to two planters per year, solar panel installation, bike racks. So within the the environment sustainability section itself, there the recommendation from yesterday was 529,000, almost 530,000 out of that section. On the transit piece, as as we've discussed already, the first item there with respect to the buses, as we've learned new information today, based on the on the feedback that we got from our funding partners, you'll see on the on the overhead here, I've made an adjustment of 2 million to reflect the updated costing for that. So we were coming in at 1 at 4.2 million for 2526 before today, and we're adjusting that by $2 million. So the the total for the transit section of that of of this department is is 2.5 million capital expenditure for 2526.
Okay, Counsel Ramsey, just one second, sir. Go ahead.
Thank you, folks, for that. Bike share program, did we ever approve that? We never approved that, but we're looking to you're looking to get that in the thing? Anna, I guess I'll ask you.
Thank you. So when this last came to council, we asked for approval to apply to the Green Municipal Fund. And so you all approved that we should do that with a certain vision around the the size and parameters of the bike share. We did receive that funding and so it is included in the capital budget here to say like, yes, let's go ahead with it. And it's a two-year pilot. We have 864,000 in funding from provincial and federal sources over two years of the pilot.
Okay, and just to follow up, your worship, if you don't mind, Anna, are we going against the private enterprise out there? Like, let's say Joe Blow down the street is trying to do the same thing. Are we sort of competing against them?
We don't.
My own, I'm just asking, you know.
Yeah. So we don't have any private bike share operators. We have bike rental companies that will rent a bike for multiple hours, but a bike share is modeled on trips that are less than 30 minutes and they're one-way to to stations, whereas most bike rental companies, you rent from a location, take it out and then bring it back to that location. So it's a different business model and and when they've been implemented, they don't compete with bike rental or bike tour stores.
Just one second, deputy. Go ahead, deputy. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And I have some concerns around the bike share as well. I mean, we struggle with getting people to wear helmets on these e-scooters and various things. And then now we want to get into a, you know, getting into this type of a project ourselves and and, you know, if we can't police the external groups that can't wear helmets, how are we going to police our own group? So I'm a little hesitant on going forward with this until we can come up with a plan that way if if I guess if either Lain or Anna has something to say on that. But really, I'm not I'm not I'm not sold on it just yet.
Anna or Lain, go ahead.
The we have a draft RFP that we would finalize if council approves us to move forward with this, and it will include a line in there to say that helmets must be provided with the bikes or there must be a solution proposed by the bike share provider to provide a helmet that is locked to every bike. There are other bike share jurisdictions around the world that also have mandatory helmet laws like on PEI, and there are different types of solutions that are possible. So it has been done in in cities that have mandatory helmet laws.
Counsel Ramsey, you want to follow up?
Yeah, and just to follow up on that, and I'm I'm with the deputy mayor in that because we both sat on the police for a while and it's just going to be taxing us again to make sure our our police and all, whoever's going to enforce these rules, don't have the time to stop everybody who will not put their helmet on. And I think we're putting the I think we're putting the cart before the horse because the e-scooters and that, we did nothing but heartache last year. Well, yeah, the last two years. I mean, Counselor Beck sat on it too, and we like this, and I drive downtown and you see people with bikes and that, they just they won't put their helmets on. So are we encouraging, like, it's great to say every bike's going to have a helmet, but people got to put it on their heads. And I don't know how much PR we can do with that to get that straightened up. I mean, we talked to Kenny Mollol or Kenny Amernian all the time, and he's he's been advocating this for for 25 years at least. And, you know, I don't know, I think there's something we should put a pause on this.
Anna?
The 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 liability for somebody who chooses not to wear a helmet when one is provided by the municipality would be on the individual. Of course, helmets should be worn, they're a great safety tool. If one is provided, then we've fulfilled the municipality's responsibility to provide that helmet if an individual chooses not to. They're very much liable for that decision. And yeah, the the other aspect is that another budget line within so I have ultimately, this is council's decision and it's our job to administer those decisions. We do have this project over 80% funded from federal and provincial interests. So I hope that that weighs into your decision. And the other part of one of the other projects listed in the environment sustainability capital budget is for active transportation infrastructure. We are well underway on a 10-year active transportation plan. And the bulk of that AT infrastructure line is about a rapid implementation network. So this is not necessarily new multi-use paved pathways, which can cost, you know, up to $3 million per kilometer. It's about placing modular concrete blocks, quick build, modular infrastructure like bollards or flex posts, new paint on roads that can easily accommodate them so that we're rapidly expanding the amount of safe and separated infrastructure outside of our high-speed main arterial roads so that there are more safe places for people to cycle, which will ultimately lead to increased uptake of active transportation. And that sort of goes hand in hand with the bike share provides the bikes, the AT infrastructure provides the places to ride the bikes.
Counsel Beck.
Yeah, I thank you for that, Anna. Would you be able to, so if I understood that correctly, and I was I was wondering about this, so we would say take, I don't know, Nassau Street and there'd be those sticky sticks be coming up and it'd be kind of a marked, demarked. So do you have a can you share with us what where the planned areas are, just so you so we would know that?
We have a suggested set of there was the Bike Friendly Communities Plan in 2022. And so we've provided that to WSP, currently working on our 10-year active transportation plan. The priority one and two, like top priorities from BFC, would be the most likely places. But the exact locations for the rapid implementation network infrastructure would be defined by WSP by June, July of this year. And so it's really taking their expertise and they're they're considering things like street widths, traffic amounts, speed of cars, connectivity to the network. And based on their expertise, they've done this in multiple cities across Canada, they'll make those recommendations.
Okay, so that'll come in later. We'll have that ascertained at a later time.
Yeah, we're sort of asking you to approve the budget for the rapid implementation network and trust that the consultant will.
All right. Just one, can I just follow up?
Go right ahead there, Counsel.
Thank you. So the transit facility, are we going with the transit facility or not? The electric, the electric, no, the electric transit facility. I'm just so I'm looking here, we have buses, yes. And we the construction of new transit facility, it's still it's paused. Okay.
We, yeah, we have requested to ISIP to to change it. And as Lain mentioned, today, we heard there are two projects in for to our funders and we received news today that one has been approved to switch the funding from purchase of electric buses to purchase of a larger diesel fleet. We are still waiting on the outcomes from them for the transit facility money being transferred into more buses in in years two through four. So when we receive that, the adjustment will be made in the budget.
Thank you. Counsel McCabe.
Thank you. And the electric buses, I'm just trying to see the operational cost. You're looking to go to RFP to run that program or it has the what's the operational cost that'll go with the electric bikes?
E-bikes.
The e-bikes system, sorry.
Yep. So because it is a pilot program, the operational cost is included within the like the capital cost is the entirety of the capital and operational costs for the two-year pilot. So it's a it's a $1 million expense, 600,000 of that is for bikes and then two years of operation each at 200,000. But they were all included in the capital budget project line.
Is the city going to run this program?
It would be an RFP out to an operator, like there are companies that operate bike shares in other cities that have their own software, and we would be asking for one of them to bring that software here, hire local people to run it for those two years. And then if it is successful, we decide on how it continues afterwards, whether it's a private company or there I think there are three governance models that we discussed at council that we would look into at the end of the pilot.
Thank you.
Counsel McCabe, be sure you want to go on? Another question? Or you want to wait? Okay. Deputy Mayor.
So the, thank you, by the way, for some of that clarification. So the pilot project capital cost that is covering the operational, that's going to cover the increase in police services and bylaw for when helmets aren't worn? Is that going to be costs cost recovered too?
Increase in police services was not part of this budget. I I wouldn't know how to estimate that.
So Anna, could I just ask a question? I've seen these in Toronto, Montreal. So the bikes go to a charging station, correct? That's a charging station that's on that image right in front of us. Actually, I have it on, can you put the image up there, Lain? It's page 20. So those bikes go into a charging station, correct?
Mostly, they're just docking stations, so they're not actually charged there. Typically, a the software would detect when the battery is low and and staff would swap over those batteries when needed. But in a typically in a downtown area, there would be docks to keep the bikes very organized so they're not on the middle of the side.
But those docks are not charging the bike?
No.
There's no cha, okay.
Yeah, so usually it's battery swaps, which is similar to how Epic Electric e-scooters works.
And that would be the provider taking care of that?
That's right.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions on the environment sustainability? Could you just ask your question there? Sorry, please.
I just looking for clarification on what Anna mentioned around the total costs under the Q and A on this. You mentioned, Anna, that part of it is operational costs to deliver the program. So I'm just wondering if we shouldn't, in fact, parcel that out of the capital S because that's not going to be a capital item at the end of the day.
I I was instructed to include it within as part of this, but if if directors would like us to move 400,000 or I suppose 200,000 in each of the next two years through that operational, that's a change that can be made.
So that's not capitalized, that's operational. That 200, 200?
Yes.
400, yeah, that's take that out of there, there, old buddy. Bring her down there.
Just.
Oh, just one second. Counsel Bernard?
Oh, sorry. Counsel Bernard?
Name come in, so I'm just going to Counsel Bernard.
Thank you, your worship. And just to clarify, this is a two-year pilot project, correct? And so if if it doesn't go over well, we can just cancel with no cost to the city? Is that correct?
That's correct, and we could sell the bikes on at the end of the the two years.
Okay, so even though it's a pilot project, the bikes will belong to the city of Sheraton through this funding then?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that was my question, your worship. Like, if if it fails, and I hope it doesn't, but if it fails, who's stuck with the bikes? It's the city, right?
Yeah, it's capital asset, we'll sell them.
Oh, yeah, you can sell anything, yeah.
Okay, can we move on? Okay. Thank you, Anna, thank you very much. Thank you for your time, patient, patience. Two chiefs coming up or just one?
Fire present.
We'll do fire.
Here's the fire.
So Lain, do you want to give us a quick Pino overview?
Sure, your worship. So under fire department emergency preparedness, this list of projects, a lot of them are self-explanatory. Chief Tim is here to respond to any questions. The larger ones include the cost for new fire station of 2 million for 2526. And you'll notice that there is additional capital costs estimated within the the five-year plan beyond 2526. There's an engine two replacement that we've adjusted the cash flow for through our deliberations. The self-contained breathing apparatus, that was for an upgrade and a couple of smaller investments there. So so the total capital cost request for fire and emergency preparedness is 3,230,000.
Okay, okay. Any questions?
Yes, sir.
Okay, there's there. Counsel Ramsey, Ward 5?
Thank you, your worship, Mayor of City. The craft, for 2014 to today, I've been beating this dead horse. You keep saying that we need a new water boat or a new boat, and we still haven't received one. We fixed it up the first couple of years, and now it's up to about $500,000. We still don't have one, do we? And it's federal waters, and I keep saying, and you're probably sick of me saying it, chief, but like, would Ottawa not help with the purchase of a new boat by 100,000, 200,000 or the province or something like that? Because it is federal waters and we're only doing the response work. And it's been here since I've been elected in 2014. So I'm just wondering, what is the version of that?
Fire chief, mainly.
Thank you, your worship, and through the councillor. Yes, with the fire rescue craft, so what we've done, and I've only asked you for two years, not not 14 or 11, but yes. So with the fast rescue craft, that's right. The fast rescue craft for a full replacement is estimated around 500,000. So what we've done is taken that 500,000 down to 100,000, and we're going to replace the the power components, the motors on our existing fast rescue craft. And that'll give us the time to source some of that funding that we have been unable to find to this point. But that'll give us that carryover to be able to to look at that in the years coming.
Okay.
I won't ask anymore.
Oh, yes, you will, Counsel Ramsey. Yes, yeah, yeah, all the time. Yes, okay. Counsel Beck?
Yeah, so I'm just going to the new fire station design and completion. And I know at the where we will get the fire underwriter survey information at at some point in time. But yesterday, there was talking, there was talk about the design had been done in 20, what? whatever?
2022 election year.
Okay. So is that design still in vogue? That's the one that we're still, wherever this fire station goes, that's the one we'll go with?
Yes, well, the design is still ours, we've paid for it. We still had money in the budget to complete the design, which is what we were going to do, and now we're looking with the Fire Underwriter Survey coming forward, as you mentioned, Council Beck, we're gonna be coming forward with a potential of land and/or the start of construction. That's all we're looking at in '25, '26 for that two million. As you see in the next, as Lane mentioned, in the five-year spread out there is where the actual builds of the station come in.
Yeah.
But that is, that is the state there.
So we tentatively had the land out by John Yo Drive there, just north of John Yo Drive.
Yeah, Malpec Road.
Malpec Road.
Lies between Atlantic Cat and...
Just a little north of, yeah, by the Atlantic Cat, that...
South Atlantic Cat.
Boars Drilling, Drilling or wherever it is, right around there?
Or Well Drilling.
So is that, is that, is that still in play, or is that, will we have to look, will this Fire Underwriter Survey determine where actually our new building will be going?
Uh, it's...
Because we're budget, we're putting in money here in this capital budget for land procurement and possible start build. So it's kind of a mixed bag here in this, so is that still in play, that land, or where are, or will the Fire Underwriter Survey determine that?
Yeah, the Underwriter Survey, as you'll soon get to, see in the full presentation, does have idealized, or I wasn't in the word, optimized locations and number of stations throughout the city. So it will give us a, an area that would be the optimal location for that station. It's not picking a lot. We do own that lot that you mentioned out off of Malpec and Sherwood. That is still the city's asset, it's no doubt increased in value over the years. If that is the proper location, the council decides upon, that then the savings here of purchasing a new land may come into play. But as we look at things with our response capabilities in the growing city, that might not be the proper location. So that'll be up to, determination after you get the recommendations from Fire.
Council McClear?
Thank you, Mayor Brown. Just curious, Chief, do you recall just what the number was on the plan design work for the station that you have? Was it, just curious?
Yeah, it's over 5 million.
Sorry, Your Worship. For the design work?
No, no, the design work, 330,000.
So far, with 127 or so outstanding.
330, and then we had...
So it'd be four, about 450,000 was the estimate, and total cost will be.
Okay, so Chief, if we go to '26, '27, your budget request is 17.5 million, correct?
Yes, Your Worship.
And then the next year would be 2.6, and then '28, '29, you get 22 million. Is that for the land, station? Like, the design that you have, I think, is for about, and Council Bernard, you were sitting around the table, because we were on, we were both on the same committee, the strategic priorities, it was 5,807,000 square feet, third station?
Yeah, Your Worship, I think it started at 32,000 and worked its way down.
Oh, yeah, no, it came down, yeah, yeah, it did. So this is not the same design?
This is not the same design.
If you're looking at, going to 17, then...
Those are estimates, Your Worship, for the coming years in construction. We don't have the, we don't have quotes on the construction costs for that, so those are estimates over the next five years.
But are they cumulative?
Yes, they're for different assets, Your Worship.
Different, like...
Different land, different buildings.
Yeah, but it's for station design? Well, no, but you have, again, you're looking at multiple years. So it's like, if you get into something, you're gonna have to pay for it, you don't pay it off all in one year, there's multiple years to it, so...
Which is why the five-year plan laid out such, Your Worship.
We know that we're going to need...
Just get your button there.
Now that we're, we've committed, that we know we're gonna need a third station or more service in the area of fire, so I think we are committed. It's just we have to make sure it's the most financially smart place and safest opportunity, but we didn't get any of that information yet. So for this year, all they're saying is that we need this piece to start.
So you're on the last council.
Yes.
You paid 330,000 for the design from Sable Arc.
Right.
There was an estimate, because it was somewhere in the 6,000, 7,000 square foot with three, three bays. We were looking at seven, five to 7 million dollars. This is not gonna be the same design, we have to go with a new design.
Your Worship, we don't have to go with a new design. You're gonna determine that as mayor and council. I'm gonna be bringing forth the recommendations that have been laid out by the Fire Underwriter Survey.
Right.
When I provide those to yourself and the council, you'll make a decision on exactly where things are going and how much you want to spend. I'm gonna tell you what the recommendations are and the needs of the city to continue to provide fire emergency services that we can. With the city growing, it's only obvious that we have to grow as well, so this is a little bit of foresight, looking at what we're gonna need in the future. The Fire Department and the operations of it are gonna change after this Fire Underwriter Survey, as long as some of our recommendations are carried forward. That's gonna be evident to every citizen in the city as we unveil it.
And that's forthcoming, that Fire Writers Understudy, where we'll have that discussion?
Yes.
Correct, okay. So do we need to put the two there now, or why don't we just wait and see? It may be more than two. Like, that could come as a supplementary budgetary request. Why put the two there now? Just set it aside, and then a look at what we wanna go with, one year, year one, year two, year three, year four, year five?
Yeah, the two million there, now, Your Worship, is to finish the design once the location is determined, which is, once again, gonna be a recommendation through Fire to committee. So finish the design. The design is not 100% complete, that was done by Sable Arc. They had, we have outstanding, I think 127,000 is the accurate, to finish the full design is what we still have in the budget. It's not a completed design, and once we look at what our response capabilities are gonna be, how the stations are gonna operate, be staffed, be filled with apparatus, that determination is gonna make it, wants to be determined at, where exactly the station is and how big it's gonna have to be. It, no, we're not gonna build three fire departments, we're gonna build three stations, one department, so it's not gonna be extraordinary in any way, shape or form. We're gonna go through this in the most fiscally responsible manner, as Chair mentioned, and determine where we're at.
Okay, Council McKay?
I just wanted to just jump back to her a sec here. You made a point a few minutes ago about, on this topic, about planning out in, you know, future fiscal periods for the capital. I made the same point with the turf fields, and that wasn't agreed upon. So you just made my point to this, what I tried to make in the turf fields for doing two fields, and why wouldn't we, you know, maybe '26, '27, we're estimating, I don't know, 5 million dollars, that's all we're doing here. So when I brought that up, it was, that's not the way we do business, and now this is the way we do business on this one. So I'm trying to, you made the point...
Sir, that's why I'm having the back and forth. I'm looking at the numbers, these are large numbers. If you agree with those large numbers, then we'll go forward.
I disagree in principle with the...
With the turf field, that was an add-on. This is a proposed five-year budget that he has, starting at 2 million for purchase of land design, 17 million, 2.5, 22 million, that's what he has...
That's fine, I'm not, this is, I'm not critiquing, that's what, here, there's nothing to do with this. I'm the principle of what your message was around the fact that we're doing that for, I see that for many of them here, but when I tried to do it for the turf fields, it was, our only focus wants to be on what we can get done in 3 million dollars for this, and I'm thinking, well, why aren't we estimating a longer-term plan here for these fields? Again, I'm just hearing conflicting things we're doing here, which I asked upon in the turf field one.
I'm just, what I'm asking is that, I don't think, you should put the 2 million there, but council looks like they agree with leaving everything as is, so his five-year plan is there. I have questions, but hey, we can move on.
I just have one comment, Worship, and appreciate that, thank you. Just when we look at these capital budgets, you know, the original budget, as was mentioned, I think, or wasn't mentioned, was over 5 million, and that brought it down to three, what is it, Lane? By making those hard decisions, looking at making cuts of equipment that is needed, there's no wants on here, these are all needs. If we're to provide the fire protection and services to the city, these are the needs of the Fire Department, Your Worship.
Okay. Council Duran, any questions? Is he still here? Council Duran?
No, I don't have any questions, just concerns. You know, those are big numbers, right? So I just, I just don't know. Anyway, I'll leave it at that.
Okay. Council Bernard?
As for now, I, for 2025, 2026, I'm okay, yeah.
Okay. So John, next is information, police, is it? Yeah, sorry. Is police there? Can we just, he's here. Okay, and that's page?
12.
Go ahead, Lane?
So, Your Worship, for police, the request on, for projects brought forward totaled $640,000 for 11 projects. A lot of those you'll see as being annual refreshes for equipment, various, various equipment, and Chief McConnell is here to speak to any of those projects specifically.
Can we get some questions first, Chief? Said already, you wanna go over, do an overview? Okay. Council Beck, Council Matard?
I don't have any questions on this police one. I'm just wanna go back to our carryover items from last year. I'm just wondering if there's any way that we could denote which ones are carryover, just for information purposes, so just so I can differentiate between what's new, ask and what's in carryover from last year. I don't know if we could update that on the OneDrive and color-coded or something like that, just so we can know what is actually, because it's 9 million dollars, right? So, anyway, just as, just a request, if you could do that sometime, Lane, that'd be great. Thanks.
Okay, Lane? Council Matard and Council Ramsey?
Thank you. Just a question to the chief, just on clarity. Earlier we talked about the e-watch cameras under Parks budget, and I noticed you have them as well. So do you, do you work collaboratively with the departments that wanna have their own from a Parks perspective? Because I assume they're still managed from a policing perspective, and then why would that, just from a line item perspective, why wouldn't that just be all under, you know, your particular capital budget? Because I'm sure you work collaboratively with Parks, and if, at the strongest I've ever seen, it was Parks. I don't think Public Works would have their own, would they? Chair? I'm just curious more than anything.
Yes, Your Worship, Council Matard, we do certainly work collaboratively, and, but we ask departments to look at their own needs when it comes to our e-watch program. It is a broader public safety through partnership program, involves hundreds of businesses, and so when certain departments have needs, we ask them to try to factor it into their budget, and so it's our allocation of funds, or, you know, certainly to keep our very successful program functioning, but also to place cameras in certain parts of the city where there isn't partners available that there is needs.
Okay, thank you.
Council Ramsey?
Yes, Counselor, what's the name, Matard there took my question right out from under me. So Parks should be purchasing 20,000 worth of cameras, and you're looking for 50,000. So it's not all included in one? Like, you know, like, Mr. Frank had a thing here, he, like, he wanted 20,000, let's say for the Parks now, which we really need, and you're looking for an extra 50,000 for cameras? Is that true? False?
That is true, Your Worship, Council Ramsey, that our allocation is for, is separate, and Parks is certainly for their facilities and needs.
Okay. Counsel Bernard, did you have a question? I think you text in.
Yeah, just, it's on, sorry?
Go ahead.
It's just on Council Beck's question there. I believe that the second column, status, I was understanding that existing was a carryover and new is the new money.
Is that correct, Lane?
Your Worship, through to Counsel Bernard, so for projects that had budget for, budgeted for within the current year, we define them as existing. So in the case with a lot of these projects, they're, and as you notice, going out into the five-year plan, it's a fairly constant dollar amount from year to year, so it's provision every year, so for purposes of categorizing the status of these, we define them as existing.
Good.
So existing meaning that it was already, it was already budgeted for the current year? Or it's new money for '25, '26?
So it's existing in terms of that there was a budget for the current year for '24, '25, but there's now a provision for each, for '25, '26 in each of the five years, so it would be categorized as new money, but it's on an existing, existing refresh project.
Okay, okay, I get you now. Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay. Council Duran, you're okay?
Yeah, great, thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you, Chief, thank you very much. Okay, can we go right back up to information technology, and I think that's, anyone here for that?
No, here.
You'll take it on?
So, um...
Mr. Pino?
Yeah, Your Worship, Rory is on the line to answer any questions. So it's 440,000 over six projects here that are noted. Again, fairly self-explanatory, refresh of computers, network, fiber gear, modernizing of the network and so on.
So we don't need Rory, Rory's fine, okay, good. Okay. And we did Parks and Recreation, so we can move down from there, look at that. Slowly but slowly we go, yes. Bellalite, Senator, I think we did that.
Yeah.
Police, look at that. Public Works, and he was ready. Mr. Johnson's going to the table, and then...
You hear it long way, I thought it was...
What?
Did you hear? Did you hear? Is this you?
Bellalite? Well, the summary with Bellalite was, I think, part of Parks and Recreation, and I think Sue was gonna reach out to Bellalite tomorrow just to find out what is the relationship and how we're gonna finance it, but that's, it was discussed, correct, Mr. Jenkins? I think we did. Or do you want any more information? Do you want to clarify for Mr. Jenkins?
Yeah, thank you, Your Worship. So the ask for the current fiscal year is 6.4 million dollars, and that's, the biggest chunk of that is year one of a two-year plan to replace virtually all of the refrigeration and dehumidification, the mechanical systems in the building, which are kind of the heart of the rinks. And it is a key piece of infrastructure for the city, so it was something that had support at committee and also was supported by the senior administrative review, so it's one of those things that, it's an expensive undertaking, but it's, one of those things is difficult. We did defer it last year, we put it off for a year, but I think it's really one of those things that needs to be done. Mr. Alan Wood is available, if you'd like to have any follow-up questions for him. We did put him off, thinking that we wouldn't get to him tonight, so I'm not sure if he's available to answer any questions, but I may be able to address any specific questions if you have some.
Council Matard, do you want to clarify anything? Okay, just one sec. And Council McClear?
Thank you. So are our partners also providing capital funding towards, is this our portion, the 83, what are we, 83?
87.
87?
Yes, so that's correct, Council Matards, so we share 87% of both the operational shortfall and the capital cost of the projects that get approved here. projects that that get approved here. UPI would would have their own approval process, but I think once we, once we give the go-ahead, they're pretty much committed to 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 pay their share.
So, the 636, the 6 million, sorry, I'm just trying to follow on the budget sheet that's in front of me there. I don't see that aligning. Where where am I missing on that?
So, if you look towards the bottom, there's some numbers there, 7.4735, 7,473,500. And then there's an amount, 159,808. Those are commercial leases that go to reduce the the capital cost of the projects as per our agreement. And then the net of those two amounts is multiplied by 87%, our our share, and that's the 6.362912.
So, over their five-year project, they're looking at 17 million?
Uh, yes, that's correct.
Close to that, 17 or 14, is it?
14.
14 is 368.
14.3.
Yeah.
You're good with that, sir? And as he said, Alan Wood, who is the GM, I think Sue will be speaking tomorrow, Sue's a former CIO or general manager of the Bella Lion Center. Okay. Public Works, Mr. Paul Johnston? Oh, sorry about that, Counselor MacLeer, I was just wanted to keep things moving here.
I don't think this matters a whole lot, but I think Dan, if I understood what you just said there on on Bella Lion, the 6362912 sits under Finance Committee adjustment, and I think you were saying senior administration supported that, so I don't know if I want to flip it over to your side.
Flip it over to his side to explain or just to? Good, okay. Okay, Public Works is on page 12, and we do have a general manager or manager here, intra-manager, maybe staying out? So, any questions? Do you want to start off? Lane, do you want to give an overview or just just let them ask questions as we go along?
I guess maybe just on the on the first one, your worship, with respect to land and property acquisitions, because there's some, there's one line item there with respect to the Confederation Center.
Yes.
That doesn't necessarily fall under Paul, and we just wanted to note that we're going to bring that forward for discussion at a closed meeting as part of the meeting on Tuesday evening.
Is that all right? Yes, it was, it was a closed session that we discussed in, and I know yesterday, was it yesterday, John, Finance? We were getting into it, and I think you stopped us by saying, no, you can't speak to it. Did you want to ask a question regarding that, Mr. Counselor Beck?
Yeah, sorry, I do have to leave here in five minutes, so I just said I wanted to get my questions in before I.
You go right ahead.
So, that was one of my questions. So, the property acquisition that's going to be?
Tuesday night.
Tuesday night, discussed.
Yeah.
Okay, and there's nothing, is that, did I hear hear say that that was related to the Confederation Center? No, did I hear that?
What's that?
This, this property acquisition, is that what it is?
That's, that's, it's the whole issue, yeah.
Okay. I was just going down to line item 46. I think, is that the same brownfield initiative that we had last year that was in?
Yes, it is. Thank you for saying that, yeah.
Okay, so that is the same ongoing brownfield initiative?
Yes.
That's still in place?
Yes, and we can discuss that on Tuesday night, too.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you for mentioning that.
Thank you.
And Mike Russ is working on that file, so he'll be on.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Counselor Matard? I'm just giving you.
Are we, are we just going to go down through them?
Whatever you wish.
For at this point? I don't want to, I'm jumping down.
Do you want Paul, Mr. Johnson can start first.
How did you want to do it, Paul?
Do you want it?
Thank you. Thank you, your worship. There is a couple of points that I'll make quickly, just to ensure that we facilitate good discussion. We've had various documents, or I've had various documents looking at, and then various changes in the numbers. I just would like to, when I look at it this evening, today, point out in sidewalks, there had been an initial edit, excuse me, initial request of about 6.5 million. Now, we're down to discussing 3.5 million. Of that 3.5, about 1.8 would be continuation of this year's projects. So, that leaves about 1.2 million, well, 1.2 plus 5, 1.7 million, which would probably not cover the last five-year sidewalk plan that was presented to council. But if that's our level of service, and that's what we can afford as municipality, then that is fine. And then the other area that I looked at today was in the street rehabilitation section, if I can find it here for us, starting at line 10. The numbering seems to be out there. No, that's municipal buildings, I'm sorry. Where do I go? Yes, top of page 14, line, line one, then 28. Down to a $6 million discussion that we're starting with here this evening, of that 1.51 is our annual resurfacing program. Really leaves nothing else that we're doing in the city. I would state, I know that we like to resurface streets, and there's always something that was the last to be done and and needs to be redone. Overall, I feel that we have very good streets here in the city of Charlestown. Resurfacing them is good, but there are a few items there specifically for this year would like to get some work started on Exhibition Drive, which I see has been dropped from our numbers, I think. We've got basically holes in the streets there that we need to fix, some underground infrastructure. Water Street is another situation like that, but we may not be far along in our design to get much of an expenditure in the current fiscal year. So, whether in this discussion or whether when it comes back to committee as an approved budget, that they could move money around, there may be a management push to put a little bit more money into just a little bit of street rehabilitation over some of the resurfacing funds. But open to any other questions, your worship, counsel, thank you.
So, I have a question.
Counselor Matard first, and I'll just jump right back, because he has to leave. Okay, go ahead.
Your question, question.
Okay. Mine is under line, under the parcades, major repairs. Said Queen Street Parcade Upgrades, 3.75, 3 million, 3.75 million. Have we abandoned the idea of what was talked about with regards to, we were looking at a potential redevelopment of that area in terms of upgrading the, probably about maybe a year, year and a half ago, we were looking at that? Is that, are we now going ahead and maintaining it as a parcade only, or are we going to continue to explore that option of redevelopment, kind of what we had looked at earlier?
So, Paul, I I think Mike is working on that file. So, Counselor Beck, he's going to answer and provide a little more. Information?
Through the chair, yes, that's something that we're still actively working on. We are working to achieve a final formal offer from the developer to move forward with the project and dealing with the surplus land.
Counselor Beck, follow up?
Yeah, so, we're still, we're still continuing to explore the idea of redeveloping it into more than just what, more than just upgrading the parcade. It could be, still could be something potentially happening there.
That's correct. The expectation is the same that council left with the direction for, which is the full redevelopment and the project that was proposed by the developer.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Paul, just wanted to go back to Exhibition Drive. I was looking through here, I was, I see that it says new. I was, I was sure that was on last year's budget, because I had lengthy conversations with the previous manager about that construction project and when that was going to go, and communications were even made to some of the businesses in that area, because there was concern that it might start last year around the time of the exhibition. So, to see that it's listed as new is surprising to me. And if we could just run down through there, so are we decreasing that to 900,000 to do some preliminary work or, sorry, where did we jump out of there? 900,000, is that what we're suggesting now?
Mr. Johnson?
So, for Exhibition Drive, I think the number we're looking at in the updated draft budget is nothing. I would expect that, and again, I've been a little negligent in overviewing things, but I expect the new status is an indication that we haven't begun to dig any ground there as of yet. There's been discussion, there's been a little bit of design work initiated, but it's not a project that we can say has truly started to be existing and needs to be finished. You know, design, yes, design work has been initiated, but we can't say that we've started to dig a hole that we need to fill in to call it an existing project. Maybe a hole in the ground, but.
Okay, well, yeah, there's lots of holes in the ground there. So, I I guess I would say I don't support us removing that, clearly, because it was on, I'm confident it was on the previous budget. I'm just not finding it fast enough. Mary, you're always good at finding that stuff really quickly, if you can help me this one time, but so to go to.
I can't find it, sorry.
Exactly, you can't find.
Oh, yeah.
And then, and then I noticed, then I did notice that forecasting possibly 250,000 in '26, '27, so I don't know what that's doing and where we're picking back up at that point, because I I have to assume the work would be resurfacing be more than 250. So, what would that 250 indicate?
I think you are correct, counselor, that the Exhibition Drive has been listed in our budgets before. Documentation I have in front of me right here indicates that an account code or something has been set up for it, but no money was budgeted in '24, '25 directly for that project. Some work may have been done out of our general engineering. When I had, I think what's occurred here is that when I had first put that project forward at fully, almost fully completing it, 90% plus completion in the upcoming fiscal, I'd estimated it at 2.9, and then I'd thrown in an extra quarter million dollars two years out in '26, '27 for completion of the work. As we continue to massage the numbers, I think what has occurred is that the project has been dropped from the current fiscal, but the '26, '27 value of completing it at 250 has been overlooked and and remained there.
Okay, well, I guess from the perspective of, I disagree with it being dropped, I'll just put that out there. We certainly know that, everybody knows that area, it's, it is in disrepair, but also, you know, it does have a lot of foot traffic, so there was anticipation of adding sidewalks on both sides of Exhibition Drive, making it more user-friendly for especially when we have events there and all home week. So, to see it come off completely is disappointing. One thing, if it was being pushed to '26, '27 in its 2.9 million entirety, entirety, that might be one thing, but so I guess I'm just one of 10, but I'm putting it out there that I'm not happy to see that it's removed from the on the budget.
Thank you, your worship, counselors. If if we were to proceed with that Exhibition Drive, just for council's information, a 2.9 million that had originally been requested is probably excessive for what we would be able to spend this year. We do know that there's the nearby old home week grounds that we'd have to work around. So, by the time some of the last discussions amongst management, by the time we got design finished and tendered, we probably thinking we do some exploratory preliminary work in the fall of this year, be able to get in there hopefully early in the spring of 2026 and do some major work, may have to shut down in the middle of August, pick it back up and hopefully finish off in the fall. So, a few hundred, you know, a half million, three quarters of a million might suit us in in what we could expend this year to get that project underway.
And I think that's probably what happened, Paul, was, and I agree, that, I mean, I need to see a commitment here. This doesn't show me a commitment, it doesn't even show me a commitment in '26, '27. There was, it was talked about, I had verbal commitment. I know that's changed, so I'm not, you know, going to dwell on that. But if we could have something in this budget that commits this project to being some preliminary work, whatever that may be, I I think it's needed in this area, and, you know, obviously it's it's my ward, so I'm, you know, pointing that out. But I think more importantly, it is an area that is widely used by all residents of the city of Charlestown for major events that happen in that area, and is very dangerous from that. And I know that they put up temporary fences for sidewalks for people to be using during all home week. So, I would appreciate that, counsel, that's, you know, I'm putting that out there. Selfishly, I'd like to see the 2.9, but if we can't spend that, and there is an opportunity to put in several hundred thousand to do some work this year to get that scoping work done, that that gives me a commitment that we're that we're doing something in that area.
Counselor Matard, just '22, '23, there was the first phase of Eastern Gateway that reconstructed Beach Street, closed it off, so that was part of that, I think. But I don't see anything here for Exhibition Drive, Paul, if you can look into it, I don't think it goes back to '22, '23, might be '21, '22. No, I know. But it does, Mr. Johnson, I I think it requires to take out that creosote box culvert, right?
There is some very old infrastructure under that street. There is some, some, like we say, sinkholes that are occurring in that street. There's some water and sewer work that would be, and I guess I'm here speaking to the Public Works budget, there'd be some water and sewer work that should be combined in with that. If, you know, some money was was given, we'd be either between the two departments or to Public Works, we'd share to make sure the work is done in a proper, sequenced manner.
So, do we have a design, or do we know any, do we have any, any, any engineering studies for water, wastewater, stormwater management?
Um, I'm fine. Excuse me, your worship, sorry. I'm finding some of my other notes here. I stand corrected. It was through staff discussions in the last two months that they pushed me to say we need to do some, they've been behind the scenes doing work on Exhibition Drive, but in the original documents that I was given with Finance, there was no account code. I requested that that be, that project be put in there. We did fund it for a while, it got backed out, didn't get pushed forward, that sort of thing. So, there has been, I don't know the long, I do know a little bit of the long history in Exhibition Drive, but I don't know the recent long history on it. But there has been some design work underway, and it is a project that in the near year or two, we need to get to.
Counselor McCabe?
Might be a new Harley Street with water and sewer and Public Works coming together and doing it right, rather than if there's water work and stuff that has to happen, it makes sense to get that organized and and know, because I think there's many seats. My concern is the, if we're going to reduce those sidewalk budget, too, you know, the active transportation, we've, we've committed to a five-year master plan that we're adding to and adjusting, we know that they're needed, we're approving $800,000 in a e-bike program. We need to have safe, active transportation trails. So, how much did you say we we've cut the budget in it? What does that, what's the implications of that, Paul?
Thank you, your worship, counselors. Going to look at my document, because I'm a little more familiar with it, but I had originally proposed just over $6 million for sidewalk, and that was with some staff estimates on the five-year plan, which had been proposed, plus what I forecasted about 1.8 million worth of work that we tendered in two contracts this year, mid-year to late year that we want to complete. So, I was rebudgeting. in two contracts this year, mid-year to late year that we want to complete. So I was rebudgeting those funds. And while there was a $3 million budget this year, I was expecting we'd only get about 1.2 million of it spent. So the, the projects that we had on the five-year plan, quick math by me, was about $4.2 million worth, plus 1.8 to complete this year, got me to 6 million. Right now, we're talking 3 million, three, just a little over 3 million in, in that budget line. And I'm saying that of that 3 million, my understanding with the Finance Department is that I'm already, we've already committed to 1.8 of it for work tendered this year. Lane, Lane could poke me if I was wrong in that, he's nodding.
So basically, you're telling me there's about 2 and a little bit million to do new sidewalk projects this year?
I would say that 1.2 million new dollars plus 1.8 rebudgeted, it'd be the 3 million that we'd have there.
Wow, that's not okay.
So last year, we budgeted 3.3...
We already had that 1.8 budgeted though, right?
I'm just going to bet last year's budget?
Yeah, yeah.
3 million?
Yeah.
490,000. So the ask this year was up to, what, 6 million?
Up to 6 million because of last year's 3 million. I think we will, we, I think we have tendered it all, but we will only complete about 1.2 million.
So what are you asking?
So I was pushing 1.8 over on to about a $4 million new program to come up with a $6 million original ask.
So our ask...
So that 1.8 shouldn't, that should be a carryover. That was already approved, so that shouldn't be included in new ask, right? That new ask would be about 4 million-ish if we wanted to keep on track with our five-year accepted master plan. Which, if we're going to accept plans and then hopefully accommodate them, we have to be investing in them. So for me, one, to have like 2 million for active transportation, that's not going to get you a whole, very far. Is there any way we can...
But, Paul, I'm looking, what page is that on? 14? Sidewalks?
Line, line 127, I think, Your Worship.
Okay, I'm just trying to get it here.
Yes, we're at the bottom of page, near the bottom of page 13. Sidewalks and municipal trails.
Right.
Line 7, 9, 19, and 36.
So our budget this year...
And the 36 is the, the new construction, 3 million, 10,000.
And the budget this year is 3.5 million?
The overall budget for that section, Your Worship, is 3.5 million, but I think we're focusing in on some of that is...
New construction.
The union work and the union equipment. I think we're focusing in on...
The new construction.
Contracted new construction, which is directly line 35, of which you can see the original ask, 6 million. Now we're down to 3 million on that. And I'm saying of that 3 million, we have 1.8 of it committed already by this year's tenders.
Yeah, so last year, Counselor McCabe, new construction was at 3 million. And as of February 12th, we spent 1.3, 1.3 million. That's what was paid out. Is that right?
Money should have transferred over though, so we still should be able to be, have more money, correct?
Yeah, that's what we're, that's, no, no, that's what we've been, I think that's what Counsel, Counsel Bernard has been saying right from the beginning. Okay, no, no, we'll keep on it. It's, we're not, we're not, we're not...
Yeah, like I won't be approving that based on that.
Yeah, we're not leaving it yet. Okay, Counsel Ramsey, Counsel McKinnon, and then I have to get Counsel Bernard, he's waiting online.
Thank you for that. And just getting back to, circling back to Exhibition Drive, Maritime Electric was there about a month ago anyway, doing some work. And just, this is just for information purposes. And Paul, that street was really backed up because of the Eastern Gateway all somewhere along, and it's still being backed up and that. So we got to be very careful, the time of year and when we're going to be doing that. And I know you, you can't be doing it in January, February, but at the same time, this last year with the bridge and everything like that, it was ridiculous. Like, people sat in their cars for well over an hour. Someone went as far as Mount Thornton, hit it back in when they're going to Stratford, because they just couldn't wait any longer, you know? They waited an hour on Exhibition Drive. So that's something that we got to start looking at too, if we're going to start ripping that street up. Because I know one day that Maritime Electric was there, they only had the one lane and it was still backed up. And that's, like, that's the time of year where there's no tourists around or nothing. So, you know, that, that's just food for thought, anyway. Thank you.
Counsel McKinnon, and then Counselor...
Thank you, Your Worship. Just kind of agreeing with Counselor McCabe here on sidewalks. I think the number's low. We were in the same conversation having last year, we're missing millions of dollars. I think we need to up that for Public Works. Question on the document on the screen, 124, 125, 126, fire small fleet, parks and recs, small vehicles, and police small vehicles. It's 1.2 million. Is that, should be that under Public Works? Or should they be in their own categories?
Mr. Johnson?
And one more question, I guess.
Oh, yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Since I'm at it. I know the last couple of years, we've approved funding for snow removal at community centers, waterworks, buildings. Is there money in the budget this year so that we can have our own staff do this rather than going out to tender? Pardon? Would be operational? Okay, so, no, very good. Thanks, Counselor McCabe. Nope, it's all good. So, yeah, go back to the other three lines.
First question?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Johnson?
Your Worship Councillors, the fleet procurement shows up in the Public Works budget, and Public Works Fleet Supervisor looks after the tendering process in consultation with the line departments of what it is they need to, to make sure that we get something appropriate for them. The tender with the, through finance, but Public Works get that tender together, put it out, comes back to the Public Works Department and in association with the line departments, review the bids that were received, and then the resolution will go forward, my understanding by the line department, although the budget for it has, has shown up under Public Works. So I, I understand your confusion. I, I struggle a little bit to explain it, but it's just that because Public Works is involved in the procurement side of the, the matter, and when the vehicle gets here, hands the keys over to the line department, that's the reason that the procurement budget shows up in with Public Works. It also lets us as a city look at those line departments in the vehicle, they're, they're getting to ensure that we understand the full scope of vehicles within the city, and it's not Public Works is getting five trucks and Recreation's getting five trucks, and we don't understand that we're getting 10 trucks, sort of thing. Your question on the snow removal, was that answered?
Oh, I, I don't know. Counselor McCabe was talking to him.
Well, it, it's...
Maybe she answered his question.
What we tender out now would be operation...
She's answering on the sidelines.
Yeah. What, the tenders that we issue now would be an operational item. If we were to do that in-house and want to maintain our existing levels of service, we would need to procure additional plow trucks. That would have to be a capital item. We do not have that in our capital budget. So we could do it in-house with our existing equipment, and it'll take us a little longer operationally to get around everything, because we've added to our to-do list, and it would cost us more for our staff hours possibly in the winter and overtime and that sort of thing to get around to them. So it, it could be done operationally with a reduced level of service. I can't tell you the scale of the reduction, but if we wanted to do that in-house and do more than just one facility, wanted to do five or six facilities, I would say we would want a new piece of equipment, and we have not budgeted for it capitally.
Okay. Good there, Counsel McKinnon. Okay. No, no, no. Counsel Bernard, he's the silent hand out there. The phantom hand. Counsel Bernard?
Thank you. I'm just wondering, I don't see anywhere in the budget here where the, our gas tax money has been allocated. So do we not still have 3.5, 3.6 million there possibly? That, and I'm talking, you know, Paul's talking about the sidewalks, not enough money, or, or the streets. I don't think that's in this budget yet. Can somebody answer that for me?
Counsel Bernard, through the chair. Yes, I think you're, you're, you are correct. I did confirm with Director McEwen a short time ago, and I was in touch with the Infrastructure Secretary today. So there, there should be about 3.6 or 3.7 in terms of CCBF funding that we will be able to use for projects in the fiscal year.
So then we can put that towards the shortness of sidewalks that Paul's talking about?
If that's the wish of Counsel, yes.
Yeah, yeah. So there's, there's, there's some funding there, folks. Thank you.
Thanks for that. Counselor McTard?
Thank you. I just wanted to circle back. We didn't, I didn't get to a conclusion. So Paul, maybe the question is, are we, are we now, is somebody now determining that the Belvidir, sorry, the Exhibition Drive rehabilitation is not required this year? Or at all? And are we, you talked about if you had some funds, you would be able to start doing some work on that, and then the, the conversation ended, we haven't made a decision. I, I'd like to know one way or the other. I mean, it's been talked about, obviously. I've got email communications that support that it was supposed to be in the budget to do it. I just went back and verified those with the previous manager. So to me, if it comes off here now, it's likely coming off, unless I keep coming every year and bringing it back. So I need to know what the city's plan is for Exhibition Drive reconstruction. Paul, their plan for...
For Mr. Johnson?
Your Worship Councillors, you're correct, Counselor McTard. I haven't heard your, your fellow compatriots come to a decision on that. I, I certainly would support not having a vote, but certainly would support, just doing rough numbers here, if we had 500,000 towards Exhibition Drive, that'd be a sixth of the project. If we did a sixth in this year, and two-thirds next year, and a sixth the year after, we'd have a completed project. If we could get 500, or even better, 750,000 to try and push forward with that project and get a start on it, it would be appreciated by the management staff who have been working towards solutions there.
So I also want to point out, thank you for that. I mean, I know there are many streets across the city that need reconstruction, and I'm not trying to single this particular one out as a Ward 2 initiative. It was brought up to me, and it was presented to me from the park, or sorry, the Public Works Supervisor, Manager, that it needed to be done. So I'm pushing it because I was told it needs to be done. I'm sure there's hundreds that need to be done, but this one was on the list. It was discussed last year, like I said, I got a communication. So I'm not trying, I'm sure there's one in every ward. So, but the fact that it's here is telling me something again that it needs to get done. So that's all I'm asking.
I, I support you, Counselor. I do.
I appreciate that.
Yeah. I support you on Beach Street. So why don't we just do this? What are you asking, Paul? 500?
Well, there's other comments. I think it's fair to hear other comments.
I know, and just, let's find out what he's asking first.
I think, Your Worship, that if we could get 750, or 600, or 500 in there, like I say, the department management would be very happy to, to push that forward.
That's, yeah, just one sec. That's, that's on the table. Counsel McCabe, Counsel McLeire.
Thank you. And I guess, you know, like you said, I, I'm not saying, if this is a pro, a street that requires some public works, some, some water and sewer, we just want to make sure that we're planning before we start going in and putting a lot of money into a street that in two years, the whole pipe or underground work for water and sewer is going to be required. It needs to be considered, and I guess it comes back to our original street rating. We've had that come to Public Works numerous times, where they've kind of made sure, and, and the last one that was presented to us was really clear, what streets in the city were kind of in that red zone of not being able to sustain another winter, or not be able to, you know, endure too much more before there was actual real problems. I'm assuming that Exhibition Drive would be on that street, and it would hopefully be in the red zone, if we're spending 25 minutes talking about that being a priority for the city. So I just, I want to make sure that we're meeting the criteria that was presented to us as a council, to make sure that that's in the red zone, if we're going to bump up more money.
Thank you.
Counsel McLeire?
No, I'd just like to support Paul and his manager and the Counselor, Counselor McTard. Obviously, it's a project that, you know, has been identified by previous manager or staff, sounds, and again, just with Paul's, you know, recommendation there, let's throw, throw 500, get started, and let's move on. Thank you.
I, I believe the engineers, Chief Engineer said 750, correct?
It would be nice to start with 750,000, Your Worship, just to ensure that we're not coming back to you saying we need a little more, or have to move money around.
3 million after the gas tax.
Well, Josh knows, and so does Mr. McEwen knows, that that's, that takes a lot of water that goes through J. Frank McCauley Park that comes from right out the university. So that's, that, that box culvert needs to be replaced.
And that's 750, Your Worship, if we have to share a little bit of that with water and sewer, depending on...
They get money.
Yeah, but it depends on how you facilitate the work and what needs to be done first.
Way to keep raising rates. Okay, Counsel McKinnon?
Thank you. At this time, I, I'm not saying that Counselor McTard or Mr. Johnson, that it's not a good idea, but I'm not prepared to throw 750,000 or take it from the gas tax. I think the residents also need sidewalks, active transportation routes. But I'd like to see where Exhibition Drive lists on the rating sheet. We spent money last year and have a guy rating every street in the city. There's a report. I haven't seen the report, so I would just like to see where Exhibition Drive is on this list before I support the request.
Chief Engineer, do you know?
Yeah, and I don't have that list, Councillors, but it, it's the street with the hole in the side of it that we have barricaded off. So there's not, there's not too many of those. We do have one or two, but it's, it's one of the ones that's going to be bad to need to be fixed.
So what would be worst is first? Okay. Counsel McTard?
Thanks, Counsel McKinnon. You know, and I do appreciate, I see, I do understand that everybody has, I didn't bring this forward, there's a reason why it's here. And there is, and to Paul's point, there is a massive, like, you would lose your car in this hole, that's how big it is.
Oh, come on, not that bad.
Your little car. You would lose, you would lose the mayor's little car in that hole, for sure.
You mean, you lose the mayor? That'd be a good idea, right?
But no, I agree, like I said, if we, the minimum that, the minimum that we could get to, to get some work done there, but if it's already money allocated in the, the budget for street resurfacing, then as long as there's some work going done there, that's what I'm asking for, Counsel. Thank you.
Counsel McLeire, did you want to follow up again?
No, I, no, I'm in agreement, you know, 750. And then just on the sidewalk thing, just sidebar, I'm talking about lists. I think there was a list last year, and I guess, I don't know if that still lives. You can find that, I'm not asking you to pull it up, but I, I'm trusting that it's, that whatever happens, regardless of the capital that's allocated, that whatever's on the list is still on the list.
Yeah. Okay. Counsel Dwan, I forgot about something. If you go to page 13, just one second, is it 13? No, it's 12, municipal buildings. Paul, under municipal buildings, Sherwood Rec Hall upgrades. Now, Counsel Dwan is on the line, and Counsel Dwan, you can probably fill in what I might miss, but this has been ongoing. It, we bought the property next to it. I think it was Mrs. Doucette's property. We owned the building. Paul, the 100,000, I, I don't think that's, you know, that might get a few windows done and some doors, but I think we have to do something with the building, whether you, you know? Well, a new one would be a million, million-five, but I think, we have to look at a renovation, so 100,000 is not what would help with that renovations, renovation project. Like, I know we're doing Hertz Hall, and I know Counsel Bernard is on the line, that's at a half million. I, I think we have to look at both in the same, using the same lens, that either we renovate it completely or tear it down and do something, because I think you was a boy, I think you were a boy scout in that hall with Counsel Dwan or others, that I know that, because I was in the Charlatan troupe. But is there anything we can do? Can we, do you have any, any thoughts about it?
Your Worship, thank you. The subject line may be a little misleading there. The funding that we're asking for is long awaited, but to begin to determine what we need... funding that we're asking for is long awaited, but to begin to determine what we need to do at that site. It's, uh, it's more determining what something should be, and not the exact details of it. Um, yes, we know we've got a hall that, uh, is really old, and a lot of deficiencies in it, that we'd like something upgraded, but probably new. We know we have another lot next door, that we could do an expanded, single-level, barrier-free, rather than dual level that we have now. We also know that we have the Cody Banks Arena nearby, um, which in five or 10 years, maybe like Simmons, and, and needing an upgrade, that arena has the Maplewood Room, which is a little bit of a community, uh, venue. Uh, so part of this analysis in the coming year would be, when do we think Cody Banks would, uh, be rehabilitated or changed? How would it still need a Maplewood Room if we did a new Sherwood Hall? Would we have those two facilities, uh, together? Could we construct a new hall and then add a rink on to it? Would it be better if they were separate? Uh, a whole bunch of, you know, planning, uh, preparation, uh, matters like that. Originally, uh, and I do know the people of the area, the counselor, everybody's been, uh, waiting for that hall to, to see some work. Um, originally, just because of the time it would take to do things, I was proposing 100,000 dollars in the upcoming year one, a little more, 250 to get going at it the second year, a big expenditure of a million, uh, in years three and four, as we worked on it. So the 100,000 isn't a lot of money, but it's for planning purposes of a new capital expenditure.
Counselor Duran?
Yeah, I, I, it, it does sound, uh, you know, you have a plan there, Paul, and I appreciate it. Uh, I, I've been working on this eight, 10 years, and like I, like I said before, um, you know, Hertz Hall, we agreed last year, uh, to upgrade it. That was near 500,000. Now we have 500,000 to do a, a big, major renovation again this year. And, you know, the Sherwood Rec Hall is used every night, uh, after school, before school programs. You know, I, I know, you know, it takes time and planning and, and all that, but the place has been moved there since the early 60s from the war up at the airport. So, you know, I, I, I know, you know, and I appreciate you putting in the money and, and taking a plan, but I'm hoping that we can, you know, easily match the Hertz Hall for 500, and then let's get this going. I mean, uh, you know, the people of this area have asked and asked, and I've asked and asked, and I went through so many different CAOs and, and managers and everything, and it's always wait, wait. So I'm asking to match the Hertz Hall at 500, and you know, and I'm certainly in favor of Justin's, you know, we got to get that done. I know there's a lot of asks, but, you know, we, we have to do something here. So I, I'm, I'm asking for 500 to get this stuff going, um, and that's, that's all I can say about that. Thank you.
So Counselor Duran, in last year's budget, Paul, I, I think you have last year's budget, it does have a line item, Sherwood Rec Hall upgrades, and the amount for that was 15,000, if I'm looking right, and to, to date, 18,000. So that was just upgrades. I think the 100,000 you're talking with this, just let me finish, Counselor Duran, the 100,000 we're talking about here is to look at a design, an engineering design, like, I think with Counselor Duran, and I agree with him, like, what is the purpose of the 100,000? If you could just explain it, I know you, just repeat, maybe in simpler terms.
Thank you, Your Worship. Uh, I can't speak a whole lot to last year's budget in what it was initiated for. I think we did get a new ramp on the side of the building during the course of the year, because it was immediately necessary. Um, what we're looking at here is budget for the next fiscal year that we think we can spend. Um, if Council, if everybody's in agreement to go out and build a building tomorrow, we can put out a tender. But we don't have architectural design drawings that we can put out to tender, and I don't know if anybody here can tell me, or anybody here can agree, whether the building's going to be one story or two stories, whether it's going to be 300 square feet or 3,000 square feet, whether it's going to face east, or whether it's going to face west. Those are the planning issues that we need to do before, you know, we need to hire somebody to help us and, and do the architectural design, tell them what they're designing, then do the design, then we can get out to tender, then we can start breaking ground. Realistically, how far can we get this year towards breaking ground? We're saying that probably hiring, you know, hiring somebody to help us design, getting the design with all the, uh, community and counselor input and user group input, finalizing that, then going, uh, with those broad parameter thoughts of what it is, and getting somebody to actually create, like I say, architectural engineering drawings for it, then take those and go out to tender and have somebody give us a bid. We're going to be very late into the year, maybe not in this construction year to do it. So the 100,000 dollars was for that planning component, like I say, just of one floor, two floors, finishing up, you know, so that we can answer these questions. One floor, two floor, uh, how big, what user groups, how many closets, how many bathrooms, which are, which ways it facing, will we ever connect Cody Banks, new Cody Banks, that sort of thing is the planning that we would get done, and, uh, long awaited, uh, but a step forward.
Counselor Duran?
Okay, uh, you know, I'm not, I'm not looking for everything. I just, I don't think 100,000 is going to go too far. That's, that's my problem. We'll run it really quickly, you know, and, and then be left waiting for another year to, to finish the plan, to go out to tender. I, I understand, I mean, I, I know what it's like. It takes, takes time to get drawings, takes time to get, you know, even community involvement, uh, of what would be best suitable. But I just feel 100,000 is not going to, is not going to cut it. We, we'll be out of money within a month. That's my thought. So we're going to need more, uh, you know, e, even 250. Or, I mean, I, I'm, I'm here to negotiate, but I mean, we, we throw, we, we throw Hertz Hall, or, or somebody else, other building around, and we're throwing 500. I mean, that's over a million dollars we're putting in there. So I mean, I know 100,000 is, is, is going to run out very, very quickly.
Paul, like, can we, is there a number that you need, a bigger number that he's talking about, or i- is this, again, I know I'm dragging this out?
Uh, I'm just going to be pulling numbers out of the air, Your Worship, on how much a planning exercise would cost. Um, do hear Counselor Duran's concerns that, hey, if we did have a 75 or 100,000 dollar planning exercise that we got completed in the fall, then we could go to tenders and give those firm plan ideas to an architect to begin constructing, or to begin designing, if we did have money to begin paying that architect, uh, engineering firm. Um, the, the council can increase that money, or Public Works can come back and look at other areas within municipal buildings, or other areas within our capital budget, or approach council on, uh, increasing the bun, the budget or moving it from somewhere else, if we did get to a point during the year where we'd run out of money, but still had work that we could do.
Counselor Duran, can we go with his plan, and then just keep the eye on it? Is that all right with you?
Well, sure. Uh, you know, 10 years, 11 years, the same, I guess.
No, no, I, I think we want to get it done, and I agree with you. It's, it's way overdue.
Yeah.
Your worship, I, I'm, I want to support the increase. I think, you know, looking over tonight, seeing some of the big numbers that have been going in for design work and that, I think Counselor Duran's correct. I think 100,000 dollars isn't going to get much off the ground here. Um, you know, we look at Hertz Hall right above it from an upgrade perspective. Uh, there's other upgrades here. I, I think 100,000 is not near enough to get any real amount of, uh, design work, scoping work or anything. So I'm in favor of increasing that.
250?
Well, I think it's equally warranted to Hertz Hall to myself, but that's just my opinion.
Okay. Uh, oh, Deputy, go ahead, Deputy. Sorry, Deputy, go ahead.
So if we've got Hertz, and then we also have the Sherwood Hall, and why don't we go three and three? Three for Hertz and three for?
Well, I think Hertz, Hertz Hall is a heritage, uh, resource. It is a heritage building. That's, that's, again, I'm, I'm, I'm looking at our Chief Engineer.
What's it have to do with the money?
And what does it have to do with user groups that use it? Why are we spending so much money on that? What do we get out of that building?
It's a heritage building. I know, that, that's, that's the reason why it, it's costing more. Paul, can you provide some background to Hertz's Hall and that 500,000 dollar request?
Uh, not perfectly, but, um, Hertz Hall, historic building, uh, from the West Roy, excuse me, the East Royalty, uh, community at amalgamation time, um, where it was cited, and the changes that were occurring on St. Peter's Road, it and a couple of private properties in, in that area were being encroached significantly by changes on, uh, St. Peter's Road by the province. Uh, the concept came about to take the building off its existing foundation and move it a little farther away from the road on the property we had, uh, twisting it, uh, 90 degrees also facilitated that. Um, some budgetary numbers were put out there, some tenders were put out, and the department had gotten as far as, uh, pouring the new foundation and getting the building moved on to it. And it's my understanding that, uh, now that we've done that, and we've already ripped drywall off and various things to get it in its new location, the appropriate upgrades interior, uh, to bring that building up to decent, uh, quality and, and for use is estimated to be another 500,000 dollars. It's kind of maybe like a, a provincial building project that you think you know what you're doing until you really get into it, and then you find out that behind those walls, there's some things that you weren't expecting.
Counselor McCabe?
Yeah, I, my point was just that, though, again, like, I agree that we just spent that, and I know that this was up, already went to tender before it came to, to budget. So I think this is where the people are a little bit confused, too, because the process probably wasn't followed properly. I'm just wondering, I guess, so you're saying that when, when they moved that building, there was a lot of disruption inside to the building? And do people, I know that, was it the Adventure Group that still uses that building? So do they still use that building now that they're at a different location, too?
Yeah, they are. They, they're not the full staff, because they're divided between the two facilities, but they may be back there before you know it.
Are they in there?
Yeah, but how do they get in?
Well, no, 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 she's asked, she's asked, but when it's finished, that, no one's in it now, because the work is still underway.
Okay, so is that the priority that we need to get it done? Is there, is there a rush for that?
Uh, yeah. It's, it's time to get, time to finish it. Yeah, well, that's, what you can do, you can add 400,000 to the budget. That's what we can do. Add 400 so that it's 500,000 for? Hold on, just one sec. Hold on, just one sec. Counselor MacLair?
Yeah, no, just, just staying with Sherwood Hall, like, uh, if 250,000 can be, uh, put in the budget, uh, to get the planning phase started, if the planning, uh, piece, um, and, uh, drawings and whatever has to be done to get it to the next phase, if that happens to come together before, before the years, before the year's out, and, uh, you know, we had to come back, perhaps we could make, you know, a special, you know, a special, uh, uh, you know, request or draw, uh, you know, at that point in time, but, um, yeah, 250 would, uh, anyway, it's, I realize it's not going to do, uh, not going to do the full thing, but at least, uh, gets the file active, and it can be followed up diligently, hopefully, by Public Works, uh, committee, uh, you know, throughout the year, and, and see, um, see this time next year, it's, uh, looking a whole lot different with a plan in place and, 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 uh, you know, uh, a solution. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Matar.
Just want to make a final point on it. Um, to your comment of Hertz Hall, we got to get it finished. Well, I think to Sherwood Rec Hall, we got to get it started. So, get the money on there and, um, adjust that. So I'm, again, in favor of bringing it up to 500?
Yeah.
Or, sorry, um, uh, are you changing that now? 500, yeah, it's 100 there now. Sorry. I was looking at the wrong not line item.
Okay, Counselor Ramsey? Oh, no, sorry, Counselor Ramsey. Uh, Counselor Bernard has been waiting in the line, in the queue. Do you mind if he steps? Counselor?
Thank you, Your Worship. Thank you. Um, yeah, I will say, um, that, when you talk about Hertz Hall, uh, I, I think the city left it in, in, in the shape it's been, it's just continuously to get worse and worse shape. It costs way more money than we expected to, to move it and to fix it. Um, and I see Sherwood Rec Hall, the same thing's going to happen. Um, so, uh, when I was looking at it, I didn't know whether the 100,000 dollars was in there to just kind of fix it up, but to me, you might as well make plans to build a new one, as opposed to spending money on, on a building that it, it should, it should be moved or tore down or whatever and have, and be replaced. So, um, I agree. I think you might as well make the plans now to, to rebuild the facility. I mean, it's, 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 I can talk about Cubs or Scouts, I can remember going there, uh, for those programs, too. So it's got to be getting old, and, and using Hertz Hall as example, it just continued to, uh, fall into disrepair worse and worse. And so now that it's moved, um, you know, the, the money's got to be spent on it to bring it up, it, up to, uh, up, up to, uh, and plus, to look good for the community, it, it looked, uh, for, for a heritage building, it looked terrible on St. Peter's Road. Go and buy it and see that, the, the shape that it was in. So, a lot of, a lot of people very pleased seeing it fixed up. I think Sherwood Rec Hall, the, the same thing should happen. They should, they should be rebuilt.
Thank you.
So I, I agree with putting extra money in, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, so Counselor Ramsey, it's 8 o'clock. We need a motion just to keep moving.
I'll move the motion.
Move, move by Counsel Ramsey, second by Counsel McKinnon. All those in favor? Counselor Duran, yea, nay?
In favor, in favor.
Counsel Bernard?
Well, the hockey game is starting.
Okay, no, we're, we're going to move this quickly. Okay.
My only, uh, look, my only statement on that is, is I think Saff put the 100,000 dollars in just to set the plan up. He, he, it's not to go in and change doors and change windows and everything, along that line. This is just to start the program where you're going to draw, to get somebody to do up a plan for a new building or an existing building. So I, I, you know, so why don't we get those plans out there, and then if we find out it's going to cost us so much money, like, like Counsel Bernard or Counsel Matar said, well, then we'll say, great, we're going to stop it there, we're going to build a new one. But these are just for the plan, the 100,000 dollars. Am I correct?
Yeah, well, no pain, no pain, no gain. So why don't we just, it's already been suggested.
Great.
Put it up to 500.
I don't know where we're going to find the money. Go ahead.
Okay. Now, we have to go to, anything else there, Mr., Mr. Johnston? Thumbs are up? Well, it's my favorite subject, water and wastewater. Counselor Durand, are you ready to go on that one, too?
Yeah, just a clarification. Did we put it up?
Yes, we did.
Uh-huh. Thank you. Okay.
We'll have to find some other places where we have to take it down.
No, we, we saved 700 at the Eastern Center. That's great.
Oh, no, no, we got some other stuff coming, too. Don't worry.
Okay, then, let's go.
Stay tuned. Oh, my God. Oh, God. Okay, Josh, do you want to start, or you want? This is the last one. Josh, it's always good to see you. Counselor McCabe, any questions? No, you want to wait? Okay. Let's go.
Perfect. Uh, thank you, Your Worship. Um, so in front of you is, is kind of the budget there. One of the major things I wanted to point out, um, is in conjunction with Public Works, um, with the street rehabilitations, any projects that do go forward, if we do plan on breaking ground in the next fiscal, typically, the water and sewer would need their full amount budgeted. So if we did Exhibition Drive, um, we would look for that, I think, 1.8, um, or one, I believe, 1.8, um, to have that budgeted, because once we break ground, if we were to do that, we can't not have water and sewer backfilled. Um, typically, the surface treatments, like your sidewalk, your resurfacing, any, any kind of street lighting, that can be pushed to your next fiscal. Um, but if there's any projects there that we do kind of jump forward with this year, I just wanted to highlight that we should look at having the water and sewer portion fully, fully budgeted. But if there's any other questions, I'm happy to attempt to answer for you.
Any questions? What's that? Oh, we're with you. We're supporting you. Counselor Duran, any questions? Counselor Counselor Bernard?
No, I think it's pretty clear. I'm good.
Yeah, everything's pretty clear. It's just that, what are we going to do with exhibition drive there, the reconstruction? Do we, are we coming to anything on that?
It's, I think we're adding, what, 750 for Palm, Public Works? Is that what you were asking?
Yeah.
And water and sewer is going to match that?
So we would, we would look to have approximately 1.8 budgeted for this fiscal if we do plan on breaking ground.
Okay. Okay, so, just before you, if, if you go down to water, and this has come up a couple of times, Josh, and I brought it up with the director, the wellfield protection, I know we keep putting that money in there, and then during the year, we use it for transfers, but we've been, Richard has already, your director has already submitted, sent two letters, one to the Minister of Municipal Affairs, Land Use and, uh, Land Use in Communities, and one to the Minister of Agriculture about, we need protection, so we need government support. Like, do we really have to put that there? Because, you know what, if we wanted to buy land, there'd be no problem coming back to this council and saying, look, we have to buy this land. Like, do we need to leave that million there? Like, if we're trying to cut some areas, I'm just asking. So if, if you look at water and wastewater, it would be number, number nine. So, for the last couple of years, we've put a million in there, and, again, wellfield protection, on our update, it's still a million dollars. There's a couple of others here, but I, I'm, Josh, I know it's important, I'm, I'm a big supporter of it, but I, I just think that the province has to step up to help municipalities, especially fully serviced municipalities like us that require water outside of our jurisdictions. So is that something you could consider? And, look, I'm just asking, if you guys don't, maybe Dan has some points of view on it, but I'm, again, if we need to buy land, this council would be the first to come back here and put an emergency resolution on the, on the floor. Counsel Dron, I'm not overstepping, what, what we talked?
No, no, I mean, I, I've, I've been watching this for years, and then last year was the first time we borrowed from it, I think, and, and to pay other bills, which, which, it's not what it's meant for. Uh, you know, we, we've talked about it for six or eight years, protecting the wheel, wellfields, but we never do. So the million dollars is here, but we never use it. You know, there's boundaries around the wellfields that we should be protecting, uh, but, again, we never do. So I don't know why it's here that we can borrow against it, and, and then, like you said, if, if we come up with an agreement, whatever wellfield we have to protect, I'm sure council, you know, you could, you could ask council and we could borrow more money. I don't know why it's here myself, either, so. I mean, it shocked me the last time that we transferred money out of it to pay for Harley Street and these three bills, three, three-year-old bills, so that's what shocked me, right?
Okay, Counsel Matar.
Thank you. Um, I would, just wanted to bring up on the exhibition drive, so this, no, sorry, the same work that's needed, every once in a while, we all get our moment, this is my moment today at exhibition drive. So for the work that is needed, Josh, from the Public Works perspective, do you need the same equivalent type of work done, or can one happen and this can come at a, at a subsequent time? Like, and needing to have some assessment money in there as well? Because I'm, I'm only just saying, if we're going to go do that kind of work, and we've agreed to it, and we don't want to put the equal money here or something here, then he's going to be out and say, well, I can't do my part.
Yeah, but water and wastewater have to be part of the project.
I don't, that's the question.
What do you have there, Josh?
Yes, so we would have to work in conjunction with Public Works, there would be expenses for them as well if we came in and did our work this year, but it, it's not something that, that would be one or the other, like.
So, Josh, I'm not saying do any work shovels of ground, it's more of that high-level scoping and, uh, design work that needs to be done. That's what I thought Paul's going to use that money for, is to determine what needs to be done there and come up with a, a plan for it, so that's, I'm asking you there. It's not necessarily shovels in the ground, but.
Absolutely, yeah, so there'd be a proportion water and sewer would put towards that, that scoping work, so whether that was ground exploration and in design and planning. But if we were to break ground, we would need that. So if, if it's just designing we're looking for this year, then it would be a smaller ask. It would, it probably could work with the Public Works 750, so a portion of that could be water and sewer, but if we did decide to break ground, we would look to have that fully funded.
But that would be up between you and Paul to determine if you could make that work in the 750?
Yeah.
Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah.
If we're, if, if council's decision is just to have planning for this fiscal, then yes, yeah.
Well, that's what I thought 750 was for, it wasn't going to do anything else.
So, the wellfield protection, do you have any comments on that?
I, I support the comments that you're saying, in the sense of, we, we just went through an exercise last week where we took the whole bunch of money out of there to pay for that, so maybe it's a good opportunity to just drop it and come back when need is, and that might be for all land acquisition, right?
Dan?
Thank you, your worship. My only comment on that is that it, having it in the budget gives the director and the manager a little more latitude in terms of going out and negotiating in good faith to, to make an offer on a piece of property that would have to come back to council, of course, but to have a bit of an idea that, you know, there is some money in the budget, so you can go out and, um, people will be more interested in talking to you, I suppose, but, uh, yeah, that's my own comment.
Yeah. Counsel Dron, are you okay with that?
What, leaving it in or taking it out?
Taking it out.
Yeah, yeah, but like, like I said, uh, you know, we've never used it before, and, and we, we've used it to pay bills, which, which, in my mind, was, was not appropriate, but, you know, uh, but if we want to buy land, we, we can come back, you can go out, anybody in the city corporation could go out and make an offer and, and then come back and ask council. I mean, it's, it's not tying us to anything. If you want to go protect the wellfields and, and give offers on, on different things, and then come back to council, give a proposal, council would have to go again and borrow money again. It's the same thing, I, I don't know why it's here to pay bills.
Anyway, Josh, you know this, council would not stop from buying land to protect water. We know that, because we have the best taste in water in North America, so we want to protect that status. Counsel Ramsey, then Counsel Bernard.
No, I just want to make a statement that, back to exhibition drive, Justin, that it's, before Public Works even thinks about doing anything, I mean, sewer and water got to go in first. Am I correct with that, Josh?
Correct, so we would be the first ones in?
Yeah.
Absolutely, yeah.
I mean, so the sewers will be working together and things along that line. Yeah, great, okay.
And you'll check with the business owners there on exhibition drive, right?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Counsel Bernard?
Especially Chucky's.
Counsel Bernard?
Thank you, thank you, worship. Yeah, I just wanted to bring up, um, it doesn't matter to me whether you take it or leave it in, but I think in, in our discussions yesterday, our finance meeting, uh, I believe Richard was saying that they were looking to reach out to some of the property within those, uh, within those zones in the wellprotection area, and it wasn't sure if it was one, two, or three, but it was when the, within those zones that they wanted to reach out to some people that, uh, I thought he said, now, I don't want to put words in his mouth, I thought he, they, they seemed interested to sell, so I think that's, that was my understanding of why it was in there.
Well, if they reach, if we reach out, Josh, sorry, go ahead, sorry, but that.
Thank you, worship. No, I was just, I was just wanted to, to mention that this past fiscal, we did have two individuals reach out to us, um, and we did have discussions with them, we just couldn't come up to a, a amicable price. So there was two instances where that value could have been put towards land acquisition. Um, I know that we had initial discussion with another landowner on a smaller portion within that area just recently. We haven't had any discussions on price or kind of what that looks like, but it is a tremendous idea to have it there, not only that we, as, as, as Dan had mentioned, that we have a little more latitude to move on, on land acquisition, but it sends a good signal as well to the province. If we do want legislation for, for wellfield protection, the best way we can say that is we budget each year for it, just because we don't expend it, doesn't mean that's not foremost in our minds, um, and I think it does send a tremendous signal to the province and to our residents that this is a priority for us. Just because an opportunity doesn't exist right at this moment, doesn't mean it doesn't come up tomorrow. Um, and it's like anything, when planning-wise, we want to be prepared for that situation and, and be able to jump at that at the moment's notice. So I just wanted to, like I say, my piece and.
What, Josh, I appreciate what, what you're saying, but you know, and so does Richard know, that we will back up the water and wastewater utility if a land sale has to, that comes to this council, comes to any, the Standing Committee responds for water and wastewater. Correct, Counsel Dron, that we would move forward on it?
Yeah, for sure.
Anyways, just, sure you can.
I, if we're not using it, and it's there, and it's not really, it's a separate, like, budget, we're not trying to keep it underneath a certain threshold.
No, it's part of the, it's the overall budget. This is part of your capital budget.
I thought it was separate, though, with that, it's not under the 60, that, is it under the 60 million?
Yeah, the 60 million is the two, two, two corporations.
Okay, that makes difference, then, but.
I wish they were separate, that, for that purpose.
I thought it was, that's why I was like, who cares if it's there?
But they're consolidated box. Correct? Yeah.
Uh, one question, your worship.
Just one second. I think. No information there, Josh?
I guess back to exhibition drive.
It's got a lot of, it's got a lot of airtime for, huh?
We do, we do have engineering underway, um, and if it was council's decision to move forward this fiscal, we could be in a position to break ground.
This, this summer?
This summer.
Yeah. Don't do it around exhibition time.
Jesus, no.
Jesus, don't.
Anyway, your worship, if this was the last, the last department, with all the add-ons, we didn't see that we knocked any off.
No, no.
Was Dan following this, and, and are we close to our mark, Dan? I guess is what I want to know.
We're down about, if you take that other million off.
No, your worship, I'm asking Dan now, just relax.
It's 59 million.
Dan?
Thank you, counselor, through the, through the chair. So we're at 60.8 million now. As Counsel Bernard indicated, there is, uh, 3.7 probably that we can throw towards it with CCBF. I think originally, we had talked about a target of around 50.
Okay.
So, you know, that's my comfort level, but I'm not in your position as elected official, so what we do have to do, though, is when, once, once you folks settle on, on the number, we have to take that back and factor the interest in depreciation costs into our operating budget, and then that will, will inform our, our operation, operating budget discussions that, that will come over the next couple of weeks. So it, it, they are connected, but I think if we can agree on, on what, what the starting point is, we may be in a situation when we look at new initiatives and new staffing and that we, we feel that maybe some new personnel are a little more important than moving one of these projects ahead, so there may be a little give and take, but, uh, you know, that, we're, we're, we're within striking distance, I think, is, is what.
There should be some cuts coming.
Uh, there, potentially, because we haven't done the math on pulling, pulling all the, the operational budgets. We want to take a little bit of time over the next week or so to do a little refresh on what our operating surplus might be for the, for the current year. So we, it's probably a little early to say, but I, I think we're within striking distance, and if we have to come back to sharpen the pen a little bit, we, we can do that.
Yeah, but you said you're looking at anywhere around 50, and we're up to 60 now, so we got to be.
Yeah, we're, we're.
I didn't see any cuts, no, that's all I seen, that everybody wanted add-on.
Yeah, we're, we're probably about 6 million from where, where I would have liked it to, to have been, but again, let's, let's wait until we, we build that into the operating budget and see where we sit, uh, with that.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Thank you for that.
Because we didn't add anything to sidewalks at all on the budget here, did we?
Council adjustments should have added in there.
Right?
Sidewalks.
Anyway, it'll be interesting when it all comes back. I do see why capital and operations will have to run together.
Because, Lane and Dan, you will be doing a revise, that'll be sent out. So, Dan, Lane, that's 60 million, current version, does that include or exclude the wellfield? That's still in there.
Yeah.
I think we're agreeing to push it to the side?
Right, to push it to sidewalks.
Sue, you think, you're concerned? Well, no, but we can spend it, if, 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 if offers come, we will spend it.
They got to go looking for it.
Well, yeah, and that would come back as a special, special request for council to make that expenditure. I'm, I'm just trying to make sure that, you know, we have something that we can work with. So, is it, is it the decision of council to leave it in, the 1 million in the wellfield? What's your decision? Or do you just want to park it for now?
I think if they want it in, if they leave it in.
Reallocate sidewalks, that will come back.
Put it in the sidewalk. And what, reallocate?
Well. Yeah, anyways.
Something back to the residents rather than.
Well, we have to, we have to protect our wellfields, too. Okay. Lane, Dan, you know the discussion that took place on it? We worked the numbers, and then, does it, John, does this go back, Counsel McLeir, does this go back to, uh, finance?
For Tuesday, for Tuesday night.
No, no, are we meeting beforehand?
We, we could, if, uh.
I think we should.
Yeah.
Sorry, I, I didn't catch what, what. I think the Standing Committee for Finance and Administration should meet before we make the final presentation.
Okay, um, we, and we do, we will have Confederation Center come in.
That would be on the, on the Tuesday.
Discussed on, in closed session on Tuesday. So what are you, what is your proposal to happen on Tuesday?
So the 60 million that you have there still includes the 1 million dollar for the wellfield, correct?
Yes.
And?
60.8.
And I think that there's discussion about additional monies for sidewalks, multi-use paved pathways, active transportation pathways, so that's going to adjust that again. So you keep the million in the wellfields, or do you increase it? Yeah, just, I'm just trying to find out, what do you want to do?
I guess from my perspective, I, I think we would be best to have the clear direction from, from council tonight in terms of what you want in, what, want out, and then we'll build that into the operational budget, and then, you know, we can find out what the consequences of that are.
We're trying to wrap this up, John, so what do you want to do? Do you want to leave the million in for the wellfield? Go.
Okay, the, the, the recommendation on, on, on the wellfield thing, the majority of what I heard around the table was take it out, so I, I would suggest, uh, take it out where, where it lands, I guess, I'm not sure, but take it out for now. So that, that line, so that's got us up to 59, 59.8, and again, I know, uh, there's, Lane talking about 9 million a carryover that you thought perhaps you've identified, well, yeah, yeah, is included in there, but it's 9 million that's been approved in, by council on, on last year's budget. Yeah, so we're kind of a, you know, a net increase of maybe 50.
Okay. Good? We're all right?
All good.
Hold on, CAO wants, sorry, didn't see that, go ahead, CAO. CAO Sue Fraser.
Thank you, your worship. I didn't really want to weigh in on any of this, but I have a bit of a flag on any movement to take money away from wellfield protection. I know that all of these projects are important, sidewalks are important, streets are important, all the, all of our assets are important assets, but not having reliable, clean drinking water, I think, is of paramount concern to all citizens, and to our head of utilities' point, if we're not even showing a million dollars in a 60 million dollar file of our level of care for water for our residents, I think that sends a very bad signal to anyone else coming to the table to help us with that agenda.
CAO Sue, I give our director a lot of credit, he and myself, we've been sending, we've sent two letters. Richard, have we received a response from either one? I don't think we have. I don't think we have. Like, we've been reaching out, and, and no response, so we keep putting our money on the table, but they're not coming back, like, I just find that we do our part and we're not getting a return on our investment. So does this send a message? Maybe it does.
I agree with, I think you should leave it in. It is... Can we do the...
Second thoughts?
Leave it in. What is that perspective, what she says?
Yeah.
Leave it there. Let's spend it, though. It's there if we need it, so maybe just leave it there.
John, McLeary?
So the sentence... Leave it in. Leave it in, which, but...
Okay. Okay, we're back and forth, okay, so Council Dron, yea or nay?
Well, like I said, take it out.
Okay, Council Bernard? He probably left.
Did he?
Watched the game.
Um...
Oh? Got your rocks?
No, I'm just about to whip the door, I got to go pick up Lane. Why don't you wait till Tuesday night, whenever, whenever staff have a chance to go over the the cost of the total debt, see? We may have room to leave in.
Okay, okay.
I mean, it is important, and I understand, I mean, we ran into this last year, and I mean, if we have an opportunity to protect the wellfield, then we should. I also know we can also, you know, council can reconvene, but I would like to leave it in and see what, see what the administration gets back with as far as our operational cost for the total debt.
That's the beauty of politics.
Let's go.
Counselor, sorry, I was going to say Counselor Jenkins, I mean, Mr. Jenkins?
Thank you, your worship. I just wanted to clarify for Counselor Bernard, in terms of building in the cost of the, the operational cost of the capital budget items, that won't happen by next Tuesday, we're really probably talking about the first week of March, in order to give time for finance, the finance team's been working hard to pull this capital budget together, and they do need a little bit of a window here to, to both refine the operating budget and pull that together, and then build the capital budget into it, so I don't think we'll have that answer on Tuesday, and in fact, I'm certain of it, so just wanted to manage your expectation on that, probably more like the first week of March, hopefully before the regular meeting in March, so we can...
No, Dan, we have to get this capital budget out first. I, look, we'll be able to expense what we have to in our operational budget, guys, like...
I can have a third one, if you want to have that allocated.
Well, okay, then you know what, leave it all till the end of March. I don't, I don't want to do that. I don't know if everybody agrees with that, but I'd like to get this budget out first.
I'd like to get the capital budget out, get going too, so, you know what?
Yeah.
We always did.
Always did, yeah.
Last year first.
No, we didn't last year because we, it was an anomaly.
But it also, your worship, and I understand...
Does the capital budget...
Yes, they do, they do, and so does the feds.
But they can run in a deficit. It's really nice for us to have a real sense of what one impact is going to be on the other impact. So for me, I'm really not comfortable supporting anything till I can see both sides.
If we borrow 50 million dollars, using the math that was...
Sorry, that was just my thinking.
Using the math that we used last year, every million that we borrow, we set aside 100,000, 10%. So you put that in the budget, operational budget, so it's 50 million we borrow, it's going to be 5 million dollars in borrowing costs. Is that correct, John? Council McLeary?
Now, you often quote that number, the 10% number might be a little high, I don't know if...
That's what we used last year.
... comment, or if you want to speak to that.
Yeah, thank you, so it's a reasonable thumbnail to use, but it's the rest of the operating budget that we didn't, that we aren't, that we have less certainty on in terms of salaries, new initiatives, forecast for the operating surplus for the current year, there's a lot of work to be done yet in terms of figuring out we are, where we are on the operational budget, so I can't state this strongly enough, I think it would be premature to approve the capital budget until we have a sense of where we are with the operational budget. We can, I think we can, we can, I think we've done great work here tonight, we've made great progress in identifying what council's priorities are, but, you know, to be consistent with our tangible capital asset policy in terms of factoring in operational costs of capital decisions, there is a requirement for us to do that, and, you know, none of these projects are going to start before the middle of March, it's not like we have a rippering rush to do that, and I think it would be, my strong opinion, my strong advice, to just hold off on approving it. I think we have a great snapshot of where we want to be, and now we just have to figure out if we can afford it.
We spent three and a half hours here tonight, two and a half hours yesterday, we finished the budget.
If I have to, I have to...
Yeah, just one sec, we finished the budget, okay, so here it is, February 20th, we have to get, we're meeting on the 22nd, no, on the 25th, I'd like to have this the first week of March. Get it moving and get going. I don't know if everybody, if you all disagree with that, state your opinion now, but let's get this out the door so we can move on. Okay, Council Bernard?
You know what, I would say, I don't think there's any problem with taking it out for now, and I mean, let staff do the negotiating and see what we come up with, and then take it back to council then. If we don't know yet, then take it back to council.
What are you referring to?
What are you referring to?
Well, I was, I was referring to the capital budget, I want it done by, and ready for council for the first week of March. Did you hear that?
Yeah, yeah.
You agreed?
And I mean, I'm in agreement to barely get the capital budget out as soon as possible. That's right there, I mean, we're already linked, my opinion.
Motion adjourned?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Sue, thank you.